Oh, I didn't, I had a couple come in. No, we didn't, I didn't send a note. I hope so. I'm sure if you tell one, uh... Jamelle, you didn't notify any of the butters of a pipe shortage being tabled, did you? Oh, you did. Oh. He's on it.
We, Jay and I did it both. We didn't call each other.
Two notices, is what you're saying.
Great coordination.
I just happened to see you.
Sorry about that.
No, no, it was my fault. Sorry, I was gonna apologize for calling. I gotta check my email back.
No worries.
It's got so many emails this time of year.
Better than missing it. At least you were there.
Yeah, yeah, at least I was there. And actually, I got to do a little, it wasn't a site walk, but I did.
Oh, good. It was very warm on Saturday morning. Great to be outside.
Um, well, I had earlier. Do you want me to go here?
Depending on your...
I didn't know we did the, uh...
Is the American Experience tomorrow night? PBS.
So that would say five people.
It's a pretty great sort of thing. It's called a swamp. It's two hours.
Really?
Yeah, and it's got a theme, like, no way. So the, uh, the settlers, they decided to kind of, which we found us.
Yep.
You know, basically, stat screen.
Yeah.
And then how they're doing now to deal with. A new situation.
Things wrong.
It's on tomorrow night if things were ready.
Okay.
You are actually being here.
I think so.
We're on TV.
Oh, we're on TV?
We're on TV.
Somebody's waiting. Fire everywhere. Four hundred years, four hundred years. It's the news. Yeah, it's the news.
Oh, boy. I've never seen anything like that.
I thought he never bothered us. I have two of them.
Okay, show him seven o'clock. Everyone good?
Good evening, and welcome to the January fourteenth Planning Board meeting for the town of Scarborough. Call this meeting to order. First order of business is to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, our God, individual, liberty, justice for all.
Doreen, could you please assist us with a little call?
Roger Beely.
Here.
Nicholas McGee.
Here.
Richard DuPerry.
Here.
Rachel Hendrickson.
Here.
Robin Saunders.
Thank you very much. Um, just a housekeeping note here. Number ten, Main Life Care Retirement Community, Inc., the Eldorado, I'm sorry, the Dorado Drive Plan has been tabled at the request of the applicant. So if you are here for that, we appreciate you coming down. So, next order of business is the approval of minutes for November nineteenth. And the December tenth minutes, we're gonna table for the time being. We're gonna draft those. So do I have a motion for the approval of minutes for November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen?
So moved.
A motion, a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor? Sure that is unanimous. Thank you. Um, more housekeeping. We have the election of new officers this year. Right now, I guess we'll just open it up for nominations. Yes, Mr. Beely?
Yes, I'd like to nominate a slate, and I'd like to nominate Nick McGee as chair. Rachel Henderson as, um, as the vice chair, and myself as continuing as secretary.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for any of the other positions?
I'll second everything.
Uh, so with that, we'll close nominations. I have a motion to move the slate forward as presented.
So moved.
Second on that, anyone?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Close nominations. Congratulations to our new officers. All right, first order of business. The Credit Union requests a slate plan amendment review for the two nineteen U.S. Route One Oak Hill Plaza Assessor's Map R fifty-eight Lot thirty-two M. Jamelle, would you like to progress on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this project's located in the TVC zoning district, uh, the Oak Hill Plaza, as the agenda reads. Uh, so the applicant's proposing to build a two thousand nine hundred ninety-three square foot bank building, or a five thousand square foot bank building was approved by the board as part of the two thousand seventeen approval process. So as the board may recall, the applicant, uh, presented a sketch plan of the proposed project to the board in September, and the applicant actually tabled their December application. Uh, staff has provided a draft motion to the board for the consideration tonight. Uh, please note that this draft and modification, this is a draft and modifications may be needed as board deliberations have occurred. As was noted during the sketch plan review, the proposed building is more, is a more contemporary design that is generally not contemplated by the town's design standards. Uh, staff did provide a review of host, review, a host of review comments associated with the proposed design during sketch plan review. Uh, so the board should be prepared to provide guidance to the applicant in regards to your comfort with the proposed design approach. A few housekeeping notes during the previous approval process. Traffic management through the intersection of Route One and Plaza Drive were identified as an issue that needed to be addressed. The previous approvals stated that the applicant will need to conduct a traffic analysis at this intersection after full occupancy and install a traffic island if conditions are warranted. Staff has refined this language as a condition of approval for the board's consideration. And also, um, the previous approval included a bus shelter along Route One. Uh, the board and the applicant should be aware that the previous condition of approval identified the installation of this shelter prior to the first certificate of occupancy. This is also within the motion. That's what I have for now.
Thank you, Jamelle. Uh, there will be an opportunity after our applicant's presentation for public comment, in case you were here for that. And if you'd like to introduce yourself for the record?
Is this already on? Oh, it is. All right, great. Uh, thank you. My name's Kylie Mason from Sebagoteknik. So I just wanna give a quick overview. We are in receipt of the comments. Um, I think they're all agreeable in terms of, we have talked with the fire department about the turning movement. I've sent that response to Jamelle. It seems that everything's in order there. Uh, we're gonna rerun it. If it doesn't bump the curb, then we're good. If it does bump the curb, we'll, um, remove the curb in that section. In term of the bus shelter, um, I think we're just waiting for an approved model that meets with the corridor, and we'll install it per the cut sheet, um, that we receive, and I believe Angela's okay with, with that. Um, the sign, I apologize. Uh, we learned after the fact that the sign is cut off in the application, so we will submit a new, uh, sign cut sheet, um, for staff if the board is amenable to that. And the dumpster detail, um, for the previously approved project, we're not proposing one as part of the bank, but for the previously approved project, we will provide an updated dumpster detail. And then, um, just to remind everyone, this is the overall project, but, um, what we're, what we're working on is this area here, originally it was a five thousand square foot bank. Uh, what we're proposing now is just under three thousand square feet. Um, the drive-through is where it's always been, with the exception of what we've done is add a larger bypass to accommodate two lanes of bank traffic as opposed to one lane of bank traffic and a bypass. Um, we have shortened the facade, obviously, because the site is smaller. Um, we have, because we have this additional room, uh, we've added increased landscaping, um, so that certainly enhanced the facade, uh, further. And, uh, we have talked to DEP, actually Christine called today, and it has advanced to the next level for review. Uh, we don't anticipate any comments. So with that, I'd like to bring the architects up, unless there was any site-specific questions that you wanted me to answer right now.
Just keep...
Just keep going.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Steve Zremack. I'm with Sims Manny McKee, and we're the architectural firm, A&amp;E Firm, for the Infinity Credit Union Project, proposed. Um, tonight, I'd just like to walk you through the bank project, a little bit about the materials. Kylie mentioned on the approach for the project. Just to give, again, a quick overview. Front entrance, rear entrance, drive-through lane, drive-up ATM and bypass. As Kylie, Kylie mentioned, we're just under three thousand square feet. I think we were at twenty-nine ninety-two, uh, for finished square footage. Uh, here's a, a large-scale plan, just so you can kinda get a sense of how the branch lays out. Main entrance here, off of the parking area. A waiting area, entrance, banking lobby, main conference, a couple, uh, support offices, management, a workroom, and then kind of the rear, uh, of the house. Restrooms, mechanical, break room, and then a rear egress, primarily emergency egress at the rear. This board just indicates a couple of the views of the, of the building, and we can talk a little bit about the architecture. Um, so we are primarily a one-story structure. We do have about eighty percent of the building at the twenty-foot line, so we're kind of giving that impression of a two-story structure, if you will. Um, we're primarily, um, a modern approach. Uh, we're, we're brick on kind of half the building, and then we're siding on the other half. We have a brick tower with some signage. Um, we have large windows, um, for visibility. Um, we are kind of clear glass, solar band sixty, commercial-grade windows, same thing on the storefront. Primarily a roof that's mostly pitched with, um, some kind of, uh, structural geometry and also some tapered insulation. Um, but we're EPDM, and it's a white membrane on the roof. These images, uh, before you now are just the pure elevations of the building. So the south elevation is primarily what you see coming in on the entrance drive. You can see up on the screen as well. So we've got mostly a brick facade here, with a little bit of siding at the rear, and then, of course, some siding at the top. Um, our north elevation, if we go around the building, we go back to our east elevation. So primarily, uh, entrance drive through this way, and again, mostly siding on this side. We do have a stone base that also picks up across the, uh, south elevation, across the east elevation, and also continues around the north as well as a little bit of the west. So we come around the building. This is the drive-through side. Got the drive-through canopy with a, a deal drawer at the window against the building, and then a drive-up ATM. We circle back around, coming through the drive-throughs. Primarily, this is your front entrance off the parking. So we have some entrance vestibule on the side, the main conference, and then a manager's office in this area. Um, here are just some, uh, black and whites of the elevation, which is some of the materials called out, as I mentioned earlier. Um, you know, brick through this area, um, kind of a fiber cement through the back, and a stone course around three-quarters of the building. So where we have, where we don't have brick, we have the stone course, but for the most part, we have kind of a, a, a stronger element at the base all the way around. Should point out on the drive-through side, we do have a couple, uh, downspouts and scuppers, so we're kind of pitching the roof more or less as a mono pitch to the back of the building, if you will, and collecting, uh, you know, the rainwater, and then getting it into the sites that will, you know, structures like Kylie's group has set up. Uh, here again, just more elevational, uh, views here, the west and the east elevations, so the shorter. So again, the front entrance is here. It's primarily brick with the brick tower and then the siding, drive-through canopies. I think that's all we had. We also just have a little clip of the, uh, of the, um, monument sign that will be located on the, on the site. And that's, uh, primarily located just off the south elevation at the entrance drive. I think that's all I had. Again, lower left here, some of the elements of the building, the brick, the stone siding, the siding, the windows, aluminum fascia, and soffit materials. So we kind of have, um, fair amount of, you know, modernist approach to the overhangs. And a lot of that, again, is, you know, aluminum metal fascia. And the palette we propose is pretty neutral. We do have some of the finishes available around the corner, if we need to take a closer look. But fairly neutral palette, um, you know, kind of red brick tones, as we can see, kind of a multi-toned, uh, stone base that's gonna run again three-quarters of the, of the, of the, uh, elevation facade. And then the, uh, fiber cement, we're kind of, you know, proposing a pearl gray with a white accent strip. We also have some, uh, soldier coursing of similar brick, maybe just slight variation across the, uh, brick facade, so we're kind of tying the whole building together, um, with, with that element as well. That's everything I have, unless you have questions?
Thank you. You'll sit, Cap?
I'll sit.
Uh, this time, I'd like to welcome any members of the public that wish to speak on this topic. Please go up, state your name, try to keep your comments to three to five minutes. Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment and kick it off to the board. Uh, Rachel, do you wanna start on this one?
Yes, thank you. Um, I usually look at the, the architecture in the term, um, New England or Maine vernacular, but that doesn't mean that we can't take a look at, um, alternative architecture. Uh, I think what is being presented, while it is in the newer, certainly the newer design, uh, is both covered by adequate landscaping. Uh, I think the, the shapes of the building, the interest of the building, makes it actually seem smaller than it is, and not obtrusive in the site. Is that the color down there? Is that somebody else's? If I, I appreciate a chance to just to...
Yeah, do you wanna walk around?
Yeah, to, to look at it.
Now, this is heavy, isn't it?
It was the actual siding colors, and sometimes the printing doesn't come out so good. This is the stone base to go with the brick. And this is kind of, uh, evidence of the, of the palette of the brick, kind of that warmer traditional brick color. Proposing actually to go with, uh... Proposing actually to go with a larger brick module, potentially on the facade, so it's a sixteen-inch brick, so it's basically a double brick, which we have here, which is super heavy. Otherwise, I would bring it up and show it to you, but if you wanna take a peek at it.
I believe you. You don't, you don't have to have to box of bricks. All right, thank, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with the modern design. Where it, where it sits, uh, on the plaza, I'm comfortable with, um, the landscaping, and I think it will fit in to the site very well, so I'm, I'm just fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick?
Uh, sure. Hi.
Here. Hopefully, I can see you guys much better. I'm gonna move these.
I don't have much, anyway. I noticed the, um, traffic study changed just a little bit, for the smaller building. Which makes sense. And I'm trying to make heads and tails of the stormwater. You may know, did the stormwater ch, um, system change at all?
It changed a little bit, so the, hang on, use this one. So the, the change that we made was it's still, um, the first one with it being all sloped roof, they received its treatment in a drip edge. What we're doing now is, um, the area of the roof that is not coming off the edge of the roof and going into the drip edge is actually going into a filter unit. And the rest of it is still going to the underdrain soil filter that was already there.
Okay. That's kind of where I was trying to figure out.
Yeah.
That looks how it changed. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's a filter unit over here, drip edge over here, and underdrain soil filter to the, to the rear.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, they're just changing the sizes. I'm fine with it.
Thanks, Rick.
No problem.
Thank you. Um, I'm actually, um, fine with everything as well. I, I do have a question, though, regarding the architecture. Um, I, I like the building. I'm just not crazy about where it's located. And what I mean by that is, I think that design would be fine, like out at, um, the gallery, Scotty's Gallery, or, or a number of other places, but it's not, it doesn't quite fit in that area. But I, I, I'm just expressing an opinion. Uh, I, I think, I mean, I think architecturally is very interesting. I guess I'm disappointed that something, uh, you, I don't know whether you, you know, had any discussions about, uh, potential changes, uh, after the last meeting, because we did express some, some concern about that. And, um, is this the second, the second, uh, branch of, of this?
I believe it's the third.
The second, the second of the style.
Second of the style, but their third, your third branch overall?
Yeah, we have a whole branch of bank, or a rental.
Oh, so... Okay, so is this, is this pretty much the brand, that, you know, the style?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought this might be just your second one around here. Uh, 'cause I know you, I know you have one over by the old exit eight.
Yep, exactly.
So, um, I mean, I, I, I think the architecture is fine. I just wish it was a little bit, you know, more compatible with the other surrounding buildings around it. It'll certainly stand out. It kind of reminds me a little bit, there used to be a ba, a branch of a bank, Steve may remember this, years ago, right there where around Walgreens is right now, and so... So I guess I'm all set.
Thank you, Dr. Just, uh, one note that I had that I thought it, it was worthwhile to at least mention. You know, there seems to be a lot of, uh, a lot kind of ways on your traffic dynamic after post-construction, right, occupancy, you need to do a study.
Right.
Um, so, you know, in, in a brief discussion, um, with staff, I, I was kind of concerned, how do you pick the day, the time, and the hour, and you could have a couple of people who just don't wanna kind of follow the rules and kind of ruin your study over the course of one hour? Or conversely, you might pick the luckiest hour in the world, and you see no one turn and left. So I think, uh, staff, just so you're aware, has kind of a creative solution around how to kind of measure that and not kind of stick you with a one-hour window, and we're all crossing our fingers, so...
Yeah, and actually, the occup, that, the occupancy point is really important, because it has to do with the entire development, both buildings that are part of the approval, not just the bank building. But I think there was a mechanism built in that regardless of the study, I think if there was, uh, an accident, I think there's, there's something built in that... Yeah, that negates, you know, there's an accident, that takes care of it, and the design solution that's in place gets installed.
Correct, so, um, but just so you're aware of that, that it was a concern of mine that you could find yourself, you know, very lucky or very unlucky, as it may be, so...
Yeah.
I like to see a lot of averages there, and... I like to see a lot of averages there and I think there's a cost-effective solution to paying that.
Sure.
So with that said, I do have a draft motion in front of me. I'll, I'll read it. I move to approve the site plan amendment project titled Oak Hill Plaza proposed by Infinity Credit Union and JDR Trust II, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Sebaggo Technics dated 12/21/18 with the following findings and conditions. The applicant is proposing to build a 2,993 square foot bank building with associated parking, landscaping, and utilities in the location where a 5,000 square foot bank building was approved by the board as part of the approval for the 25 Plaza Drive in June 2017. Property is located within the town and village centers, TBC zoning district, and is identified on the town Scarborough tax maps as map R38 lot 32M. Planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation and finds that the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review and zoning ordinance requirements for site utilization and layout, access internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, architecture, signage, utilities, and storage. Conditions are to follow. One, to ensure safety of vehicular traffic prior to the release of the first building permit, a wayfinding signal signage plan shall be reviewed and approved by the planning staff, which directs all Route 1 northbound vehicular traffic toward the Hanaford Drive traffic signal. Signs should be located at all internal connectors to Plaza Drive and including no left-hand turn signage at the intersection of Route 1 and Plaza Drive. Two, prior to the first certificate of occupancy, the final location and design of the bus shelter pad is to be refined as necessary with planning department staff. Three, after full occupancy during peak travel times, the applicant is to perform a traffic analysis of the Plaza Drive and Route 1 intersection. If the analysis demonstrates either A, that any accidents occur due to illegal left-hand turn movements, or B, if two or more left-hand turn movements occur during any one-hour time period, the applicant will install the proposed traffic island. Should the island be required to be installed, the final design will require planning staff review and approval. Four, prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall revise the plan set to include, A, do not enter paint on the pavement adjacent to the one-way do not enter signs where the bank's exit intersects the parking lot on the site plan, sheet 5 of 16, and B, a dumpster enclosure detail. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Five, prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall, A, execute the record of maintenance agreement as required by the post-construction stormwater infrastructure management ordinance. B, pay the traffic impact fees. C, coordinate with the fire department about auto turn simulation as identified in the staff review comments memorandum dated 1/14/19. D, address traffic peer review comments in Traffic Solutions memorandum dated 1/7/19. E, submit approval of the amended main DEP permit. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Six, prior to the issuance of a sign permit, the applicant shall submit his final signage plan. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Seven, prior to the issuance of a building permit for mixed-use building, the applicant shall pay a recreation contribution fee in the amount of 500 per residential unit. And eight, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and as we coordinate through the planning departments.
Mr. Chair, if I may make one friendly amendment on item three, can we just clarify full occupancy of both buildings? Just so it's not confused, you know, several years from now when-
So you want three to read after full occupancy of both buildings?
Yes, please.
Or all buildings?
All buildings.
Do I have a motion to amend our motion?
As I move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of amending the motion as mentioned? All in favor of the amended motion? Guess we're all good? That's it, you're good to go?
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Next order of business. Roger Hale requests a preliminary subdivision review for 263 Broad Turn Road, assessors map R8 lot 13. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This project is located in the town's RF zoning district. The applicant's proposing a nine-lot residential conservation subdivision. As the board may recall, the applicant was last in front of the board in October for a preliminary review. Since that meeting, the applicant has made several changes to the plans, including proposing peaceful lane to become a public street. The applicant has made significant changes to the grading plan since it was, this was last in front of the board. So the applicant should be sure to discuss this tonight. And the town's traffic consultant provided several review comments. Staff is comfortable with these being addressed with the final plan submission. And the applicant should also be sure to provide the board with an update on the historic assessment tonight as well.
Appreciate it, Jamel. Would you like to give your name and-
Hi, good evening. Jason Haskell with DM Rome Engineers. Will help note Roger Hale and his proposed subdivision at 263 Broad Turn Road. Peaceful Acres is a nine-lot conservation subdivision on a 23 and a half acre parcel in the rural farming zoning district. And it's currently being utilized as a sandpit. Access and frontage is going to be provided by peaceful lane, 640-foot long roadway. Previously, as Jamel said, we did propose this as a private way, but after discussion with the applicant and some of the other additions that we were going to need to put into it, like the sidewalk, he was inclined to request or build this to town standards for future acceptance of the roadway. Now, the road section will consist of a 20-foot paved travelway, two-foot paved shoulders, five-foot sidewalk, and a three-foot grass shoulder on the opposite side of the sidewalk. Other road improvements, mostly based off of comments by, from the previous middle, was the addition of a street light at the entrance. After coordination with Captain Butler with the fire department, he requested putting in a 10,000 gallon fire cistern, which is included on the plans, and he has since approved the design and layout. Originally, we were showing, we were proposing one tree per lot to be installed. The recent comments from the staff is deciding, is requesting that we plant two trees per lot. And after a conversation with the applicant, he did agree to include that in the plan. The stormwater peak control is going to be installed, is provided with an infiltration basin in the rear of the property. Related to the lot development, town staff and the board has both expressed concerns with the stability, stability of the existing sandpit walls. To provide a more stable reclamation of the pit, of the pit walls, and to also include, to provide a much more attractive and marketable building sites, the slopes have been proposed to a flat, to a four-to-one slope or flatter in areas. We have submitted the DEP stormwater permit. It was accepted for processing back on November 26, and we're still waiting to hear back from the engineering review comments. The intent of the project's design is to maintain 75-foot setback to the edge of the wetlands special significance associated with the stream to the rear of the property as determined by the DEP and the 25-foot buffer along all other wetlands as determined by the town staff, the town of Scarborough. All wetlands and buffers have been entirely included in the open space as a result of the revisions to lot one, the first lot to the left as you come in here. Bill Bray with Traffic Solutions has prepared the roadway impact fee determination and has been reviewed and comments been submitted and will be addressed at the final plan. We have measured the site distance and determined that in both directions is over 800 feet of site distance, which is far exceeding the required 325 feet required for the posted speed limit of 45 miles per hour. We have been coordinated with the Maine Historic Preservation Commission based on their, the initial conversation we had with them, based on their predictive model of prehistoric archaeological sites in southern Maine. They did determine that the parcel had a probability of the presence of prehistoric archaeological sites. And they requested that a prehistoric study be conducted on the property. An archaeologist from Tetra Tech was contracted and to prepare an archaeological survey for the property. After her investigation, she determined that there is a low probability that there was any land that needed further testing or investigation. The Maine Historic staff archaeologists found the assessment to be adequate and determined that there would, there would be no required further study and that the, there would be no historic or archaeological properties affected by the proposed subdivision. We have received a few comments from staff and, which will be cleaned up, including the submission of the homeowner's documents with the final plan submission. We're still, obviously, everything's kind of dependent on when we get the main, the DEP approvals. But at this point, we're hoping for preliminary approval on the revised design. And I'm here to answer any questions if you still have any.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will welcome members of the public to make comment on this item. If there's anyone here, please step up to the podium. Seeing none, I'll close public comments, kick it off to the board. Rick, you want to jump in on this?
Sure. Yeah, the, the photographs that were included in the package, I don't know if you have this same package in front of you, but is there any, how much grading is left to be done out there? Or is it, because it's difficult to tell from some of these, some of these photos, it looks like a lot of the grading's been done, and others, it looks like there's still some pretty substantial grading that needs to be.
There, there are several areas that are going to need some rework, mostly just to flatten out some of the grades and to, you know, some of those slopes are extremely steep right now, so they've got to be flattened out. There's, there's, to get to the site grading that we're showing on the site grading plan, it's been estimated that it may be somewhere around 10 to, 10 months to a year to get it to that state and then move forward to the, the road construction.
Okay. I think you had in here, or you mentioned that, that you were trying to get everything within a four-to-one?
Or flatter, yeah.
Or flatter?
Yeah. So anything that was disturbed from the sandpit as it is today is going to be flattened to at least to a four-to-one slope or flatter. So that it's definitely more stable and you can actually get some grass to catch. And then any, any areas outside of, within the open space, except for the infiltration basin, will be left to revert back to an undeveloped case, whether it's meadow or eventually we're hoping for like the, a forested area.
And this may be too far down the road, and maybe you need to talk to your architect or something, but how are you going to determine, when you put in the foundations, how are you going to determine that the footing's actually on natural ground? I mean, have you, because it's all pretty torn up out there, right? So-
Yes. Each-
You're doing, you're doing foundations, right? You're not doing slabs, so-
Oh, yeah. Well, to be honest with you, the intent is for the applicant to sell each individual lot and not construct any of the houses.
Okay.
So he's, he's, he's not a builder. He's just a landowner that has, you know, a piece of land that's served its purpose for-
Yeah, I know, that's fine. And that's, that, from, from what I'm getting at, that might be better anyway because then it would be up to the individual lot owner to make sure that their contractor understands how to set the foundation on that type of- because this is a little bit out of the ordinary, you know what I mean?
Definitely.
Okay, yeah, that was kind of one of my main concerns, is just to make sure that 10 years from now, we're not looking at houses that are all kind of crooked.
Right.
Other than that, I appreciate you guys doing that prehistoric archaeological study and yeah, the I was just looking at your traffic study, yeah. The rest of it looks good to me. All right.
Thank you, Rick. Roger?
Sure. I actually think it looks pretty good. The photographs that are in your packet are what we saw when we're on the sidewalk, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Now, I'm kind of looking forward to seeing how this progresses because this is quite a challenging site. And so, do you, do you happen to know whether the landowner has any prospects in mind that are looking at any of these lots? I'm trying to figure out what the timeframe's going to be.
Kind of in a, we had a conversation with Jamel, Angela, and Jay on the project, and it's looking like, just, just talking with the, with the potential contractor that's going to do a lot of the earthwork, it's thinking, he's thinking that it's going to be somewhere around the 10 months to a year out after we get approval to do the work. And then they'd start the lot development and the road construction and everything that goes along with that. So it'll be all of a year before the, the lots get. So I don't know if he had, to be completely honest with you, I do not know if he has any potential buyers of the properties.
Sure, okay. All right, I-
It wouldn't be anytime soon.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing how this moves along because it'd be very interesting. I have no further questions.
Rachel?
Yeah, actually, I want to go back to the archaeological study, and I'm looking at the archaeologist's report. On the second page, she said, where she said both areas present low to moderate sensitivity. But she also said that Heritech had noted that there should be some, perhaps some additional consultation to determine if limited testing within the two identified level areas should be undertaken as these locations fall within the 200-meter range of Carter Brook identified as sensitive for prehistoric sites. Have you been doing that?
Yep, we, we had the conversation with the Maine Historic Archaeologist, and based on what he saw out of the pictures and from the documentation and just his overall experience, he didn't think that there was any reason to continue moving forward. And a copy of that letter will be submitted in the next submission. Kind of stating that, yeah.
Thank you. The other thing, one of the notes from the staff indicated that there appears to be opportunities to connect the proposed open space to the abutting open space created as part of the Mitchell Hill Heights subdivision. Have you taken a look at that?
That's, I've had that conversation with Jamel about they are abutting each other, that both open spaces are abutting each other. Not sure of any potential connectivity of the two. Both open spaces will be touching each other. It's just, it's going to be an undertaking if you were to try to make any type of a trail connection, if that's what Jamel is implying, or if Angela, I'm not sure who made the actual comment, but
I'm not sure, we're implying, I'm not sure that anything is implied, other than have you explored that opportunity? And, and the answer is yes, and is it going to, is there going to be continued exploration? Or do you think the subject's essentially closed with the other property owner?
We haven't approached the abutting property owner about that, mostly because I thought it was more that we wanted the two open spaces to be touching each other, kind of abutting each other.
With no, with no trails contemplated?
No, we didn't have any proposed trails. It was more of a conservation open space than a passive recreation.
And you said eventually you're going to look at creating a forested area or hoping that there'll be a forested area? You know, 20 years from now?
Right.
In, in that open space, are you going to be doing anything to move that space towards a forested area? And was there's going to be any stewardship of that land?
There would not be any proposed planting, tree planting, something like that at this time. It would be, it would be more up to the, the homeowners association if they did at some point want to make it more of a forested buffer rather than the meadow.
So you're going to start off with a seeded meadow?
Yes, it's what it'll, yeah, it'll be kind of a conservation mix. It'll go up and just grow wild and not be cut.
Okay, wildflowers? Okay, wildflowers in the mix?
I believe, I'd have to look at what the mix shows for conservation mix, if there is any...
I would suggest you do, we're having, nationally and here in Scarborough as well, I think we're having problems with bee and butterfly populations, and to the extent that that area can become a waste station for our bees and the butterflies, you have that opportunity to start off there before we get to the forest, so I would urge you to explore that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. I really only had two items. First, I want to start by saying thank you for addressing the very steep slopes you did have there. It looks like you've, you know, taken it to heart that, you know, something has to be done with that, so...
Walking up one of them kind of made me feel that way, too.
So, I appreciate you taking the time and the extra money to invest in getting those slope grades down, so... One of the questions, actually, since we just touched on the architectural report, this is out of curiosity, maybe you don't even know the answer, but how is, how is it that soils are used, because it sounds like they did a couple test soil, they tested the soil, how is that used to determine whether or not it's an archaeological site of interest?
Well, they looked at the soils, and then they did some very small test areas to see if they could find anything, but...
Is it to see if the soil's been disturbed, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, so it wasn't like a type of soil they were looking for?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I guess, yeah, it kind of, they want to make sure that there's some type of a natural duff layer there.
It was just curiosity, when I read it in the report, I was kind of like, how does that work? But, okay. And then, I think the only outstanding note I have here is, there was some question as to whether or not you believe the fill that was going to be used into the area was going to be suitable for the septic systems? Is it, are those suitable soils that you'd be using for fill?
There was several, there were several test pits that were dug at the bottom of the pit, the existing pit, and he was able to, those were all passing soils as well. There was no, he couldn't find any groundwater issues, or, I mean, he had, he definitely found the required separation from the groundwater, and that each one of them was a passing soil type to accommodate a septic field.
Okay, so the existing conditions can accommodate them?
Correct.
Okay.
He did, he did look at some on top of the hill, which...
And they were outside of the scope of the lots, right?
Very much so. But, yeah.
So, okay.
He wanted to make sure that every area of that lot was, had potential for it.
With that said, it is a request for preliminary approval this evening, and as such, I will make the motion that you provide preliminary approval of the plan as presented to us at this time.
So, a second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Congratulations, we'll see you again.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Tom Bailey requests a sketch plan review for 27 Ross Road, assessor's map R86 Lot 1. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just going to tee this up real quick. All right, so this project is located in the R2 zoning district. Applicant's proposing an 11-lot residential subdivision, it should be served by a 900-foot long paved access road. Just to remind the board, the sketch plan review is an opportunity for the applicant and the board to have a high-level discussion about the proposal. So, the applicant has noted that the subdivision will not require a conservation subdivision design. Our staff would like to point out that .98 acres of wetlands has been identified in the property, and the town's conservation subdivision standards are triggered if one acre or more of wetlands are found on the property. Given how close this is to the threshold, the board may want to require a wetland peer review on the property. The applicant should also provide the board with an update on the consent agreement with the varnish protection agency, and any impacts this may have on the proposal. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Just to state your name for the record?
Good evening, my name is Travis Latelier, I'm from Northeast Civil Solutions, here to represent Mr. Bailey on the subdivision. We're proposing an 11-lot conventional subdivision in the R2 zone, located off Ross Road. This subdivision will be cut from a much larger lot. Basically, we're cutting off the land that's located in the R2 zone from the rest of the lot to create the subdivision. We are proposing, the plan in front of you shows a 22-foot wide paved road with a three-foot gravel shoulder. At either side, we're proposing, on the other side of the road to include swales, to drain the stormwater, to a potential, a treatment pond that's located on the property. Each lot will be served by private septic systems, and public water and underground electric will be provided at each lot. The applicant is looking to only develop the road in this project, we are showing potential house, lot, house, you know, build outs on each, on each property, but the applicant is, will be selling the lots once it's approved and the road is built. And with the road construction, we're looking at less than 2,000 square feet of wetland impact. In addition to the note about the one acre of wetlands on the property, that does include an area around 6,000 square feet that was a dug area, that the applicant actually dug on the property, and it's a, basically, it was identified as wetlands on our plan, but I think, in my opinion, it wouldn't qualify as a, as a wetland per se, because it was recently dug, and so that may, that may give wiggle room to that one acre limit, the conventional to conservation subdivision. And to further explain the consent agreement, which would be, which would apply to the remaining land of the property, that's, that has to deal with the large pond that was dug on the property, I'm not sure when it was dug, but it was for a landing strip for airplanes. The agreement is with the EPA to, the first step is they have to make it into smaller, they have to divvy up that larger pond into smaller ponds to start, and then they will have the options to either completely fill in the pond, or permit them as it is, which they haven't decided which way they're going to go on that. But, again, that's sort of on the remaining land, and it's our opinion that it shouldn't have any impact on this development. With that, open up any questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Roger, would you like to first crack at this?
Sure. On the pond that you were just talking about, is that the one that's way up at the top? Any chance?
I'm sorry, what's that?
The pond that you were just referring to?
It's not shown on the plan.
Oh, it's not?
It's part of the remaining land, and it's, it's off, it's off over a half mile from this actual proposal.
And it's part of a landing strip for it?
Yeah, the Baileys, they put in, if you look at it aerial, it's pretty obvious, but it's a large, long pond that they installed without the proper approvals, and it's for a landing strip for airplanes.
Okay, on that map there?
Yep.
Which one, which of these, oh, these are ledge, ledge out drops? Where's the pond that you were referring to that was man-made?
So, this section right here, this little wetland area?
Oh, right there, okay.
Yeah, on lot number seven. That was a recently dug hole by the Baileys, but it was filled with water when the wetland irradiation was completed, so that's why it's sort of marked as wetland on the plan.
Staff had made a suggestion in their comments about lots one and two, I think, reducing those down, one, two, and seven, to create more open space. Any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I think the other option was to either also, or to add some sort of barrier between the wetlands and the lots. There's definitely a consideration there for the lots with the wetlands on them. Each, this lot in particular has, is pretty close to the 20,000 square feet of upland, which is in this front area. Certainly, we can, we can look at changing the lot lines, or doing something to ensure there's no wetland impact with the development of the lots.
Just on this map again, for my own benefit, on the left there, the two-story house, is that the, is that the Bailey's, is that the parents?
Yes.
Okay, because I've actually been down there, and that's where the elk farm is further, further?
The what, I'm sorry?
The elk? Oh, it's not there anymore? Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you.
Seeing there's no farm there anymore.
Rachel?
Yeah, I think the problem with the sketch plan is, review is that it is kind of sketchy, so there's, there's only, it generates a lot of questions, because there's not a lot of detail. And I think because it does, we do need that, that wetland, extra wetland review.
Yep.
I'm, also have a concern, along with the comments of the staff about Lot 1, Lot 2, and Lot 7, and I'm wondering how deep the ledge goes. Has there been any attempt to ensure that there's, is this going to have town water?
Town water, but private septic system.
All right, is there any indication that that ledge is going to interfere with the private septic?
We actually have test pits, and there are two passing on every lot, so far.
Okay. Sidewalks?
I had, I had previously met with staff, I thought, I thought there was a mention that they may not need sidewalks for this proposal, but I may have been mistaken.
Well, you may not need them, but you may actually want them at some point.
But I know there's no sidewalks on the, on Ross Road, or the road that it also connects into, so...
Well, depends on when Ross Road was built, this is a brand-new road going in.
Yep.
So, you might just want to take a look at that. It's only 900 feet long, but still, for families that want to take a walk, since this is not set up with the open space, for families that might want to take a walk, sidewalks are very helpful, especially if you're pushing a carriage. Well, I look forward to seeing the new, the plan in more detail, but I am concerned about the wetlands, so hopefully we see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Rick?
Yeah, I'm assuming this is like, going to be a public road, the way it's laid out over there?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, for a sketch plan, it's, it's, it's fine. That land that's above there, the one that says inhabited the town of Scarborough, is that Land Trust land? Do you know?
I'm not sure.
No.
It's just town land? And then... It looks like on Lot 2, you know, that driveway's kind of pushed to avoid the wetlands?
Yes.
Yeah, which is why, I mean, I understand it's a sketch plan, when you lay out that, when you do lay out that lots, if you have to shift lines around, avoid that, obviously that would be, that would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with sketch plan.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, at this point, you're, you know, it's very high level. I think, you know, if you're to take away anything from what we have comments, I think, one, first and foremost, is that those wetlands, you know, I would encourage you to consider maybe the conservation subdivision route, you can elect to do that, and that might help with some smaller lot sizes, which can help avoid it, wetlands off of private property. You know, that's, once it gets into private property, you don't know what's going to happen with that, so...
Yeah, I think with the, with the conservation subdivision with private septic, I'm not sure what the lot size, I think it's pretty close to 20,000 square feet, if I'm not, so it would be, I'm not sure how much it would change if it were, when it actually, the conservation route.
Well, at least explore it.
Yep, yep.
Or talk about it with your client a little bit. The other thing to note is peer review, we'd like to see a peer review of those wetlands, because you are very close to the one acre mark, I understand that what you're saying about that 6,000 square feet.
Yep.
And then, just to reiterate, you know, a little bit more information, documented information on that EPA finding for staff, just to have available, make sure that this plan is not impacted by what you have in agreement with them, would be helpful as well. Outside of that, sketch plans?
Yep, yep.
You got a little homework, and we'll see you back here again.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business is BBS Enterprises, Inc. requests a site plan review for 62 Muzzy Road, assessor's map, R37 Lot 38.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This proposal is located in the TBC 3 zoning district. The applicant was last supported the board in December, and in September as well. The applicant's proposing a 4,860-foot square foot restaurant, and to relocate the existing barn on the site to be used as storage for the restaurant, and renovate the existing farmhouse into an office space. So, the applicant has indicated that they're interested in providing funds equal to the proposed sidewalk along the Muzzy Road frontage towards the town's multimodal reserve account. Staff has included this language as a condition of approval for the board's consideration. Staff continues to recommend that the applicant provide additional buffering provisions to the west of the rear parking area, in order to shield structures and vehicles from the abutting properties. So, the board should be sure to discuss this with the applicant. The applicant did provide several 3D renderings of the building with the last submission, and staff continues to encourage the applicant to incorporate the locations of the restaurant hoods within these renderings to ensure they are screened from Muzzy Road. And I'll turn it over to Angela now to discuss some stormwater details.
I just wanted to, I guess, give a little brief overview, a little bit about the stormwater, because I think there was a little bit of difference of opinion last time they were in front of the board, and I guess I just want to point back out, just kind of for clarification for the board, with, and I've said this before many times, with any development, when you're increasing impervious area, you will be increasing the volume of runoff that comes off that site. That's, that's just the nature of development. What used to absorb into the ground is now sheeting off and heading to the streams. So, the task of any developer in Northeast Civil has looked at this, is really slowing that release down, so that the actual rate of runoff coming off the site is controlled. So, while you can't control the sheer volume, and I know we've heard downstream abutters talk about flooding, they, they will see increased volumes of runoff. What we are tasked with is trying to control that a little bit, and it bleeds out over time, and how you stretch that out over time. And so, staff's comments are really focused on, really, the elements of construction, and looking at, such as the aprons that they outlet, the pipes outlet, and kind of trying to get those level lip to kind of dissipate the flow, and level out over, rather than one point of concentrated flow, you're kind of spreading that out a little bit. And I guess there was some questioning on whether or not that could fit in with where the grading ends, and where the wetland impacts were shown, because just needed to figure out those details to make sure that it's actually constructible, because this is going to be, I think, a very tough site when we get into construction, because there's not a lot of wiggle room. I think when we find sites like this during construction, we end up with staff out there trying to figure out, if things move six inches vertically, it makes an impact horizontally, and when you're, you're up against wetland impacts, and so it'll be very important, I think you'll see in staff comments, about making sure we know what that limited disturbance is, and drawing that hard line, because... sure we know what that limit of disturbance is, and drawing that hard line, because we're making sure we're working in that window. Because it does put us in a tight situation when we're actually trying to build it. It's one thing to see a line on the plan, but when you're in the field, and things, field conditions dictate that things move a little bit, you've got to have some wiggle room, and this is really working up against really tight, confined constraints on that site. So, that's the only, where the staff is focusing on, really making sure those details get ironed out. So, that's what you'll find in staff comments.
Thank you. You're awesome. Let's introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Board, and Mr. Fisher with Civil Solutions. We were here last month discussing this project, and this evening, we're back to be able to show you the improvements based on the comments and the questions that you would ask. So, I'm just going to take a few moments to go over this, and it won't bother us with the full orientation. We've been here several times, and this project had received approvals actually two years ago, before they cut everything. And so, this is the second go-around for that. Essentially, what I'd like to do is just start in the review staff comments, which are the only ones, we don't have any peer review comments, they, everything was covered, and they did have a peer review comment saying everything was covered, so it's not an issue. So, I'll just go over the staff comments fairly quickly. There was a question about making sure that the barn portion of this building, which is the latter portion, is actually going to be used as an assembly use to the restaurant. There will not be any portions of the restaurant that are in that barn specifically for dry stack storage. We talked about that last time, and the applicant is fully aware of that. They want to be able to preserve that to the extent feasible, because it adds a great New England type of character to the site, but that is only for storage. There is no portion of the restaurant, even if it's in a particular area. Also, there's a question about signage under general zoning requirements, and the applicant has not yet come up with a specific style of sign that they would like to be able to have. Obviously, we're restricted in terms of the size of that sign, that's not an issue. We will be back at some point, probably shortly, either before or after construction, to be able to run the signage before the board as well, and get approvals for that independent street sign. Under site plan review elements, there was a question about the driveway, and the location of, the location of the driveway relative to a waiver. There is a requirement for a separation of driveways, if feasible. This site had the driveway there, it has the driveway there, we discussed that last month. Didn't seem to be an issue with that, with the board, but we would need a formal acceptance of that waiver for the separation of the driveway, our single driveway, to one portion of the double driveway that's on the property immediately to the right of ours, as you're standing on the road looking at it. There was also a question about staking, one of the things that Angela just mentioned. We have no problems whatsoever about staking that out. It's actually part of the DEP requirement as well. So, as far as staking, silt, additional silt fencing, that would be literally along the area of the buffer from those wetlands. We can certainly demarcate that prior to construction, that's absolutely no issue. It is a challenge, many sites are tight, there's no problem as far as that's concerned. That will, that staking and/or silt fencing will be delineated in the field specifically prior to construction, so that anybody's out there with any substantial equipment, they would be able to see a practical barrier beyond which they are not allowed to go. As far as pedestrian ways, space, and alternative transportation, there was a question about a 10-foot wide easement for the future sidewalk, and as Jamelle mentioned, we have no problem with that. That is, the applicant will actually supply the funds to the town, so the town can use that as itses fit in areas that might be more, might have more necessity, as it were, in a more immediate timeframe, to have a sidewalk somewhere else in the town or this area. We can build a sidewalk, we don't have to, we're happy to provide the money to the town to be able to do that. Under landscaping, we do have a stockade fence along the right-hand side, separating it from the materials building that you see on the right there. Also, we had some questions about additional plantings and buffering provisions regarding the rear parking area. We have added a fence, a stockade-style fence right here. A question, I should say, from an orientation standpoint, is from these houses over here, where a car comes in here, and has parks in this area, or has some headlight wash. These two properties here, this is a commercial property, these two properties wanted to just make sure that the headlight wash is minimums, minimized. And so, we've added a fence detail right here, and on the landscaping plan, you'll also see that in addition to the regular landscaping, it was coming up in this direction, which is augmenting the buffer that's there, we actually added more landscaping right in this particular area. This section right back up in here is for snow storage, but as you can see, and cars coming in this area, we're only looking at this section of property, not swinging down to this section, because we've got the additional buffer right in here that is in those landscape plans. We did discuss that last month, we didn't have any problem with that, we spoke with the applicant, he said, "Fine." We planted a lot of trees out there already, he certainly doesn't have any problem planting a few more in that area, so that's absolutely fine. From a linear distance standpoint, just to give you an idea, this distance here is about 230 feet, and this is all heavily wooded in this section, and then we've added these other trees right here, so there should not be any problems as far as headlight wash is concerned, across that distance. As far as stormwater management is concerned, Angela's absolutely correct, whenever you add an impervious surface area to an otherwise impervious area, you have runoff that's got to go somewhere that wasn't before. Keeping in mind that, sort of to coin a phrase, when, when rainwater falls from the sky, where it hits the ground is sort of grandfathered, that's just where it goes. When we're, when it's natural ground, when we're creating impervious surface areas such as sidewalks, driveways, rooftops, et cetera, that generates an additional bit of stormwater. In this particular case, instead of shunting it immediately to, for instance, a detention pond, or another area that would end up dumping directly into the wetland, we sought to detain that with a subgrade detention system that is underneath the parking lot. We discussed that last time as well, and as Angela mentioned, our job really is to make sure that anything downstream is to have the volume, the additional volumes that are now stored in this area beneath the parking lot, released at a slower rate, so that in a significant storm event, or in any storm event for that matter, when stormwater actually goes in here into the subgrade detention system, it is actually stored to the point where it's going to be released much more slowly than it is even now. So, the point being is that the extra stormwater that we would be generating on-site is actually going to release a lesser amount of stormwater into this drainage swale than is going there now. The volume is greater, the timeframes are substantially longer, so that that release isn't anywhere near what you would get right now with a significant storm event, just pushing all that stormwater untreated directly into that stream. So, that's actually a significant benefit. There is a request about the details for the intake and the outfall for the stormwater areas. We absolutely have those. In fact, it's, there was a request to be able to show that on the actual site plan. It's very, very small on the actual site plan. So, what we did, and we would submit to staff, is we've actually shown that in the one location for the outfall, that is right in this area, over here. So, what happens is, we have the level spreader, as Angela mentioned, the intention is to not channelize water. When it comes into a detention system, into a catch basin system, it's obviously channeled in an underground culvert, to the point where it outfalls. If we just leave it outfall, outfall at the end of that culvert, it will form its own, it's got a little plunge, and into a plunge pool, and then it would just literally create its own little cavern on the way down to the, to the stream. We obviously don't want that, in any situation. So, what happens is, we create these level spreaders, so that the outfall actually goes into a riprap area, it's then spread out, I'll say horizontally, of course, to the point where when that fills up, picture it as almost like a very small detention system. So, when that fills up on a level spread basis, that water, instead of coming straight out as a channel, it's going to be spread out over X number of feet in any given situation, and then flow as a sheet. So, then it goes across the vegetated surfaces, and then before it gets into the actual stream itself. So, that works quite well in this case as well, and we do have these details, and there's a condition of approval for staff approval, and they take a look at that, that's absolutely fine with us. It's there anyway, it works quite well, and I think you'll find out that it's quite beneficial to the actual stormwater for that area. It actually improves the situation. And then, finally, they had a question about the hoods for the, for the building. We talked about this last time. This is the hoods in the kitchen, and Custom Concepts, Inc. has been hired as the architect, and essentially what you're looking at is a roadway that is coming down here through Muzzy. We've got the farmhouse, that we want to keep that character, the farmhouse in front. The restaurant section is right back here, and then this is the storage area. We wanted to keep that New England flair to it, it just adds to the character of that area. There's a small church across the street, there's some residences that are around the general neighborhood, the small shop that's on the corner across the street, that's got a little sandwich shop. It's a nice kind of little New England village type of feel, and we wanted to keep it toward that end. And there's been some work that's gone into the house already, before we stopped work on that, and we'd like to pick that up again. The point being is that the inside of the kitchen area for the actual vents, for the hoods for these vents, hasn't been created yet. That will be obviously in conjunction with the codes officer and building inspectors, and anything that does go up onto the roof, to the extent that it's behind this house anyway, primary house, back in this area, it's, it would be challenging really to kind of, for anybody who's driving by, to actually see through this house to the area of the kitchen, which is right back in here, which is the lowest roof. But, oh, there's a hood, definitely need it, and toward that end, we will work with the building inspectors when we have that, and just make sure that that, that look is absolutely minimized. That's essentially it, as far as the staff comments are concerned. If we have any questions or comments, please feel free to ask them, I'll address them as we can, and to the extent that it pleases the board, we'd like to be able to have approvals with this this evening, with conditions whatever the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you have an opportunity for public comment? If there's anyone here that'd like to speak on this topic, please approach the podium and state your name. Seeing none, I will close public comments. Roger, do you want to go on this one?
Sure. I'm really pleased to see that this is really almost, you can see the light at the end of the tunnel here. I think this has been before us since I've been on the board, which is like three years or more now. And so, I think you've done a good job at addressing almost all our concerns. I have no problem with the waiver for the driveway, and I guess the biggest, and you've satisfied the buffering, I'm satisfied that you satisfied the buffering for those, those I guess the biggest, the biggest concern is, is the stormwater management, and are you, if I, if I may, are you on the same page with him on this?
I think we're, we're at the details that needs to be worked through with staff. I mean, I think they're meeting, typically our threshold is looking at getting back the rates back to pre-development conditions at or below, and I think that's where we're at. It's really, like I said, just because we've had experience with these tight sites, and staff has put in situations where we're trying to force things in that don't quite fit, I would just like, staff would feel better making sure those details are kind of ironed out, but probably not worth the board's time to kind of...
I'll just have a follow-up question on that.
Yeah.
So, when you say ironing out some of these details, do you believe that you need specific language in it? Do you believe that the applicant, and you have the relationship where you're going to meet, I mean, as some of the extra provisions he's providing, or saying he's going to provide to you, are those going, do you suspect that those will satisfy some of your concerns?
I think in the condition of approval, and I think Jamelle has drafted something that would, I think, address the concerns that staff has with stormwater. And that would be going back to working with staff, and is, obviously, with any condition, if it's meant to work with staff through it, if we are at a point where we can't get to an agreement, it comes back to the board anyway.
Okay. Sorry to cut you off there. Appreciate it, Angela.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, that, that to me is the only portion of this that's still up in the air to some degree. I think it's kind of interesting, because the abutters downstream obviously had some real concerns from what had been developed, you know, above you folks. And I think my, my impression, and I'm certainly no engineer, but I think this might actually improve this situation, but I'm not sure, you know? Hopefully, it will. You know what I'm talking about?
I don't, I guess I don't know how it would improve, because any development is going to change this situation.
By slowing, by slowing it down?
Well...
Is that what, is that what, that's what you said, right?
No. Well, when you're adding impervious area, you're speeding that up as it sheets off the site. So, currently, it hits the ground and soaks into the ground, so it goes through the groundwater to get to the stream, so that's a slower process. What we're doing is collecting it and trying to recreate that, you know what I mean? So, it's not necessarily one for one, it's not comparing apples to apples. You're, you're definitely changing the way the water is flowing off the site, and I guess with any development, I can't say that you're, unless you have a site that is completely compacted gravel or impervious areas, the only way you can really say you're improving the site by redeveloping, you know what I'm saying? It's, right now, it's soaking into the ground, so to pave it and contain it, you're trying to recreate the flow rates, really, is essentially what you're trying to do. But the volume is always going to increase, so to say you're improving it, you're always increasing volume. So, I don't see how you could really say that.
Well, I disagree, I think you could say that very easily, because we're storing it. It's like you've got a stormwater that falls on the, on impervious ground right now. Welcome to New England. It does, it's not the Iowa soil that's six feet deep. We go down just a short ways to impervious surface areas in any way, basically subgrade ledge. But there is absorption, to be sure. When you add additional impervious surface area, obviously, you're going to have more stormwater, or you're going to have more stormwater anyway. However, picture underneath this parking lot, basically a room, as it were. It's not that big, obviously, but it's quite long, where it's just, it's an empty series of chambers. So, all the stormwater that then gets captured, that falls on the impervious surface in the parking lot, basically, or the rooftops, that gets channeled to that area through the series of catch basins, as you see in your plans, most of those are then directed to that storage facility. So, in a, for instance, in a 10-year storm event, or a 25-year, in any storm event, essentially, we've got a certain volume of water that falls. If most of that water then hits, some of it's absorbed, and most of it goes into the stream, which is why we've got streams anyway, you know, why they're created, if, if most of that stormwater then is directed to this room, or this series of chambers, to be held there and released at a much smaller volume or velocity than would be there naturally, then yes, there's more water, but it's released downstream. To anybody who's concerned about the volume of water and the rate of it going downstream, this slows it appreciably, to the point where if you've got a bucket going one direction in one case, that same direction now would have a few cupfuls at any given time. It would be spread out longer, so instead of saying, "Okay, we're going to put it all here, and when the storm ends, the water ends," no. When the storm ends, we've still got a lot of water that's stored underground that is going to be released very slowly. So, the actual amount of water, the volume of water in that stream at any given time downstream, is going to be less than if we just let all that stormwater just go, one fell swoop, just go right into that stream. So, yes, I think it's improving the situation, we do have a greater volume, but it's improving the situation in terms of the people downstream saying, "I've got a whole lot of water coming through my back there."
I guess I would say that Walmart or the other larger development upstream would say the same thing about their wet ponds. They're storing it and releasing it, you know, spreading it out over a longer period, it's the same kind of argument, and I think you do see the effects.
What I think is interesting...
We're not going to solve it tonight.
Right. I agree.
I was going to solve it.
You're excellent.
No, but what, what I think is kind of interesting with this site, because of the development, the Walmart development, and how that affected the abutters on the other side of Muzzy Road, this seems very similar to me to the chiropractic development right there next to Atrea, because the people in the condos were concerned about once that was developed. And I think, it seems to me, we're going to have a couple of examples of whether this really works or not, you know, to the, to the benefit of those abutters. That's my decision. I'm all set.
Do you have anything? Rachel or Rick, do you have anything?
Yeah, I've got a couple of, of course, I have a couple of things. First of all, I appreciate you including the information on the landscaping that the, that you had put in earlier, including that. I'm looking at G2, which is the, actually, the life safety plans, and one thing I noticed on the second floor is there's an area in that, in the house, that's a sleeping area. Are you going to be using that for residential?
No, that, that's a, no, the house is to be an office for the people who are running the restaurant, but it's set up as a house, so they're just going to keep those rooms like that, but it's an office only.
Right, because all of the other rooms have been relabeled, this is something relabeled as sleeping.
There's, there's not, they can't do that. They cannot, I mean, if somebody's going to sleep on a couch or something like that for a few hours, that's one thing, but it's not a bedroom.
I wanted to make sure that that was, your response was on the record. Because as I said, I'm looking at a plan that calls for sleeping area. And also on that same sheet, the, I'm assuming it's just for the convenience of outlining the buildings, but you've got, it looks as though the building, the house is separated from the restaurant. And on the first plan, first page, it is connected. So I'm just testing, it's not separated, is it?
You mean, from a physical structure standpoint, no. It's one over a large building. It's from the front of the house to the back of the building.
All right, because again, this shows a separation. Okay. I have no problem with the waiver on the location of the driveway. And I really hope we're getting to the end. Thank you for the work. Rick?
Yeah, I don't have a lot either. I appreciate the applicant putting that fence for the neighbors. You know, it's nice. Didn't have to do that, but it's being a good neighbor, so appreciate that. I'm fine with the hoods where they're going to be. The driveway waiver's okay with me. I mean, there's no one here that's complaining about it. And I really don't see it as an issue. And I think we've got the stormwater. I know we talked about stormwater a lot, but I think based on what I heard from Angela and the way that the draft motion is, has a condition in there, I think we're covered on stormwater. Yeah, I think you did a good job. It looks nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. So I, you know, I too am okay with the waiver for the driveway. It makes sense, it's a very tight lot. There's nowhere else you could really put the driveway, so I'm down on options there. I think everyone else has pretty much covered the vast majority of it. I do, you know, encourage you to work very closely with staff on that stormwater issue. It is important to that wetland area and stream and the area engine. So that said, I do have a motion this evening. It's a move to approve the project titled Asian Fusion Restaurant, proposed by BBS Enterprises, Inc., as depicted on the plan set prepared by Northeast Civil Solutions dated 12/18/18, with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Findings: The applicant is proposing to construct a 4,860 square foot restaurant, renovate the existing farmhouse into a 2,623 square foot office space, and relocate the existing barn to be used as an accessory used to the restaurant as storage. Property is located within the Town and Village Center's fringe, TBC 3 zoning district, and is identified on the Town of Scarborough tax maps as map R37, lot 38. Planning Board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation, finds that the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review and zoning ordinance requirements for site utilization, layout, access, internal vehicular movement, parking areas, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, lighting, architecture, signage, utilities, and storage. Waivers: One, the proposed driveway location is depicted on the plan set dated 12/18/18. Conditions: Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the plan set shall be revised to include, A, additional plantings, buffering provisions west of the rear parking lot in the area where no plantings were placed as part of the main DEP-directed restoration plan; B, a 3D rendering of the building that includes the proposed locations for the restaurant hoods to ensure that they are adequately screened from Muzzy Road; and C, the elimination of the sleeping area within the proposed office space as depicted on the life safety plan dated 6/7/16. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Two, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall pay the traffic impact fees; B, pay the in-loo fee in the amount equal to the estimated construction of the sidewalk along Muzzy Road frontage. Funds are to be directed to the town's multimodal reserve account. C, address the stormwater management comments in the staff review memorandum dated 1/14/19. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Three, prior to the issuance of a sign permit, the applicant should submit a final signage plan. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Four, prior to the start of the construction, the applicant shall delineate the total disturbed area limits on the site and the area adjacent to the rear parking lot. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Five, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. That is the motion.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Point of order, Mr. Chairman and Angela. As far as the signage is concerned, do I understand from this memo that the signage would only need to go back to staff for approval? As long as the sign fits the parameters, we don't have to come back to the board to show them what the situation is?
Yes, if planning has a problem with it, they'll kick it back to us.
Okay, awesome. Thanks for your time.
Next, we have, this is number 10 was tabled. Lemon, it is Mazorian Development LLC requests a preliminary subdivision review for 28 Burnham Road, assessors map R68, lot 34.
Jamel? Thank you, Mr. Chair. This proposal is located in the RF zoning district and the October Protection Overlay District. The applicant's proposing a 20-lot conservation subdivision. This item was last before the board in August for a preliminary review. As the board may recall, the town's wetland consultant conducted a wetland peer review on this property during the fall of '18. As a result of this review, several wetland and stream areas have been expanded and several lots have been modified on the plans. So the applicant should be sure to discuss these design modifications with the board. As the board knows, one of the primary purposes of a conservation subdivision design is to avoid impacts to the town's natural resources. It appears in order to access lots one through three, wetlands will be impacted. Staff continues to suggest the applicant to consider eliminating these lots or modifying them in order to reduce wetland impacts. Staff also recommends that the applicant demarcate the upland edges of several wetland areas on the property with hardscape features to ensure they are not disturbed during construction or by a future property owner. These specific areas have been identified in the staff review memo. And the Scarborough Land Trust did provide the board and the applicant with a letter that provides an update in regard to accepting the open space that abutters their property. The letter notes that no agreement has been reached with the applicant to accept this open space. And staff would also like to point out that the size of lot seven needs to be at least 30,000 square feet per the zoning ordinance. And I'll turn it over to Angela to discuss stormwater details.
So as we just talked about, typically the board looks at the pre-development conditions and the flow rates that leave the site for runoff. As is pointed out in staff, as well as the water-incurring peer review, there is some increases to those flow rates shown at some of the areas on the site. One of the things that you'll see on this, though, is some stormwater buffers. They're shown at the rear of many of the lots. So there is some merit, and I'm sure the designer will be able to walk through that with the planning board. But it's really looking at, they're trying to show some water quality benefit. And what ends up happening is the timing of the release of the flow that we talked about impacts the rate. So there, it's where you see the increase. So it's really about water quality versus quantity. So as we've heard, some of the residents had concerns about some of the volume and rate of flow in the existing stream. It's just something the planning board should really have a good conversation about and hear what the applicant has to say or the designer, and some of the reasonings behind, I guess, the design and where the planning board really wants to go. Because it's really a fork here that we need to kind of navigate and see which way the stormwater design goes. Because at this point, that's really the big thing that we staff sees as kind of up in the air without a finalized stormwater approach.
Anything else?
All good.
Thanks. You introduce yourself, please.
Sure, Steve Blake with BH2M. I'll just walk through the, I guess, the basics of the project real quickly and address some of the questions that came up. So as Jamel mentioned, this is a 20-lot conservation subdivision. It's located at 28 Burnham Road. It's in the RF district. The parcel of land that it's on, it's actually a 90-acre parcel. The applicant is acquiring about 54 acres of that overall parcel for the development. Each of the lots will be on private disposal systems as well as private domestic wells. There are two proposed roads. They total about 2,800 feet in length between the two of them. They've been designed to a public road standard with the hope that they would be dedicated to the town at some point in the future. The open space is primarily, it kind of surrounds the development, but it's primarily along the west and the north side. And as Jamel's notes mentioned, we have had some preliminary discussions with the land trust. There seemed to be mutual interest between both the applicant and the land trust about potentially dedicating that land to the land trust. When we met with them last, we kind of left it that we would work through preliminary approvals before we kind of advance into the next phase with them. So it's still something that's being discussed, but there's nothing that's been finalized yet with the land trust. There was, the wetlands were peer reviewed. There were some additional wetland pockets that were found. Generally, they were, you know, expansions of the wetland delineation that was the wetland areas that were previously delineated. The layout of the infrastructure of the project didn't really have to change for that, change because of that. There's a small increase in the wetland impacts from the last time we were here. The proposed wetland impacts are about 13,000 square feet right now, which is still a tier-one permit with the state. This is a site location of development permit as well. We submitted that application to DEP about four months ago. We've received comments from staff, from their staff, and responded to the majority of them. The Army Corps has also reviewed this for the wetland impacts. Those permits are still, they're proceeding. And then I guess for a stormwater discussion, Angela kind of outlined what we had done for a design. So the way that we looked at stormwater, well, I guess I'll back up. We have a few different BMPs that we're using for stormwater treatment. We have two wet ponds, a vegetated soil filter, and several buffers kind of around the peripheral developed areas. So the ponds and the filters were designed to capture, treat, detain the majority of the infrastructure. So the roads, sidewalks, driveways, kind of the front halves of the lots. And then the buffers were for water quality treatment, primarily for the backs of the lots. And those areas are on the backs of the lots, for lots eight through 12, 18 through 20, alongside of 17. So the increased peak flows that we're seeing there, I would classify them as minor. There is an increase. But it's due to the, it's due to the buffers not having the ability to detain some of the larger storms. So when we do a stormwater design, we're usually required to look at a two-year, 10-year, and 25-year, 24-hour storm. And once you get up to some of the larger storm frequencies, the buffers really don't have an impact on the models. So anything landing on them, it's the same rate of, pre or post, it's the same rate of discharge. We have looked at an alternative approach to those buffer areas, which would work. We can, and we've done this in the past as well on the backs of the lots. We can put in an interceptor in lieu of a buffer, like a swale, a swale or a ditch, and capture those back areas and send them to one of the BMPs, like one of the two ponds or the filter. There is, the way that we have the ponds designed, there's surplus capacity to handle those areas. So we do have an alternative approach to the buffers. You know, they do provide good water quality treatment. But like I said, the detention, we just don't get enough detention out of them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have an opportunity this evening for public comment on this item. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on this issue, please approach the podium, state your name. Okay, seeing that, we will close public comment. Well, I'm going to go first. Give you guys a break. And it's going to center largely around the stormwater aspect. And I just want to be, you know, kind of, really want to understand this to the point where I think all the parties can walk away here, kind of having that clear sense of direction on how to approach this. So Angela, could you, you know, you say we're kind of at a fork in the road, right? And can you tell me which side the left goes and which way the right goes? And if, I mean, I imagine you need guidance from this board. The applicant will need guidance from this board on where we would best go with this. So if you could outline where each path goes, I think that would help us.
I will try. I'll probably ask Steve to chime in as he needs to. But I guess I see it as the, how the plan sits right now with the buffers does show an increase of flow. So if you look at the calculations, it does show an increase of flow rate from the site, which is something this board has used really as that benchmark. And so to talk with abutters who are going to be impacted, which we have heard from, that is, you know, a concern to be able to, I guess, justify that increase. To try to show that it's insignificant is a hard kind of sell when you're the downstream of butter. So that's where it really needs the planning board to kind of weigh in on how they feel that is.
So while we're on that, I'm going to interrupt you now. So what does it take to get to a neutral position? Is it more treatment? Is there other things that can be done to get that to not an increase, but to at least a net neutral?
Well, and I guess that's what Steve is suggesting, that the other fork is that you actually add, instead of that buffer, the strip that they're shown in the hatch, you'd actually add a swale, which would carry the water to where he's already proposing stormwater treatment. So it would then take it to those areas where he's saying he can size those accordingly, treat it to meet the standard, the DEP standards, and then be able to discharge it and show that you're not getting that increase. The difference is you will be perhaps cutting more on the back of those lots. You will be constructing a swale, which will have to be maintained, which means typically how we deal with that is easements. So that if someone goes out back and fills their ditch, then the homeowners association can open that back up to make sure that that water continues to flow. So you're not impacting everybody around you. So it's pretty typical. You know, we've done that before. Tucker Brook was an example of one that exactly we did that. In the rear of the lots, there's a swale that takes all the stormwater out and around to get water quality treatment for. So there is an alternative, and that's what Steve is suggesting is how he could change the plan.
Yeah, we have capacity in those ponds to do that. It's just a matter of grading that in and removing the buffer area.
So I'll start there. What was the benefit of the buffer area versus the swale to begin with?
Well, it's a good water quality measure. And I know we've had discussions before about, you know, some of the benefits of various BMPs. And a buffer is something that you do get really good water quality benefits from, even more so than, say, a pond. But like I said, you just, on some of those larger storm events, you just, you can't get the detention. It's, I mean, it's, the buffer is, it's a deed-restricted area that can't be cleared. It's going to be left vegetated and, you know, in perpetuity essentially, so that there's, that vegetation kind of acts as treatment for any runoff that comes off the back of the lots. And... the lots. And that's really all those buffers are for. They're not for any of the infrastructure. They're not even really for the driveways for the houses. All of the infrastructure would go to the ponds or the filter. What, you know, we're not opposed to the swale idea. It's something that we can do fairly easily to get everything to those ponds. But the, you know, I guess our look at it was that it is an increase. In our opinion, it was an insignificant increase.
And there's no doing both, right? There's no such thing as a buffer and a swale?
Well, the buffer wouldn't really serve a purpose if there was a swale.
Right.
Yep.
All right. See, look, I'm learning things. So I think, if I'm wrong, so we now understand the fork, right? Which is, one, we get a small increase, but potentially a better quality of water on site. Or, two, we go this way and we channel all that extra water, reduce the flow into these detachments.
Correct, yeah.
We have full understanding, right? Okay. So that's something that, you know, I think we should be providing some guidance.
But I guess to clarify, I guess for SD, so you're saying though, what, that buffer, as you show it now, again, you'll hear one of our board members, Robin, is always saying that a vegetated buffer is the best kind of treatment. But I guess what you're suggesting though is just the back lawns of these lots or the only thing directed to those buffers?
Yeah, basically the back half of the lot. So it might be, you know, at the ridge line of the house and then whatever lawn you have on the backside.
So I guess I would suggest the pieces that we're probably most concerned with, the roadway, the driveways, the house, are already going to those BMPs, so.
Right, yeah.
I guess the increased water quality you're getting is off of just a lawn area. Is that true?
Yeah, I mean, versus sending it to a pond. Yeah, that's correct, right.
So it's a weighing, how much do you value that water quality where it's just a lawn as opposed to the increase in bond, in rate coming off the site and whether it's an issue or not?
So I have a question. So from an abutter's perspective, from what I heard, and I'm not sure if I heard it correctly, but from an abutter's perspective, the swale would better eliminate their concerns regarding runoff. Is that accurate? It would take the water that we're worried about running off to the abutters down to the ponds?
I guess I don't know specifically what the abutters' concerns were, but with the swale option, it would reduce the rate of flow to that, to the stream or to the receiving water body.
Okay. I would, you know, based on what we heard here the last time that the room was full, I'm thinking they're concerned with the runoff and the volume of the water and their lots flooding. So if the swale will eliminate that or significantly reduce that risk, then I would be more concerned with the abutters and the quality of the water, if that makes sense. So I would be in favor of approving that with the swale.
Okay.
Thank you. Rachel, do you have thoughts on fork in the road here?
Well, I have a lot of confusion, confused thoughts, let me say that. So yes, I have some thoughts. So let me just confirm if I've got it right. I appreciate that. So for lots, let's say six through 12, with the buffers, the backyards, the water from the backyards would go into those buffers, and that in turn lessens the flow into Silverbrook and the wetlands. Is that?
The buffers wouldn't reduce the rate of flow. They would provide some level of water quality treatment.
Okay. And the water from the front of those lots goes into the storage pond.
Correct.
So now, let's look at the lots that are the closest to where we had the abutters, and that's the Trapper John, the Trapper John subdivision. And is the water from lots, let me see if I can read it, one through five, where's that going?
Towards the road, so to either a pond or a filter. The topography on those lots slopes from south to north, we wouldn't be changing that as part of the project. So from Trapper John, everything, Trapper John is higher than us, so everything from Trapper John is coming towards our project and through our project.
So the biggest concern about overflow into abutters comes from the back lots, the six through 12, basically?
Six through 12 and also 18 through 20, which abutters the main parcel.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess I like the idea of the swale as something that I think protects more of the Brook area. Would that be your assessment?
From a peak flow perspective, yes.
Because the Brook area flows into a lot of other properties and gets a lot more of the other properties downstream. So from the perspective of the abutters, it would be more beneficial to control the flow into the Silver Creek. And I guess I would think that that would be the appropriate, the appropriate way to go. Saying that, then it still creates a difficulty that we've seen, and that is, I guess, the homeowners association can come and tell somebody, "I'm sorry, I know you just filled in that space and put your play yard in there, but you're going to have to dig it up." What we've seen, I think, is that the first homeowner knows very well where the line is and remembers that there's a boulder here and a fence there, and there's something that marks the limits of, the limits of development or the limits of lawn. And the second owner passes that information on, and the third owner forgets. And a lot of third owners, and actually second owners and first owners, sometimes forget to read everything in the deed and all of the caveats. So it would be very important to ensure that there is very careful, very clear, visible, permanent demarcation where those buffers, where the swale is going to start.
More than, more than an easement over that area?
They're not going to pay, you know, 10 years from now, people will forget there's an easement there. Yes. So I'm saying is that as you go along, put a lot of thought into how those lots are sold, those lots are developed, and the swale is maintained to ensure that the.
Sure.
To ensure that it stays, because a split rail fence doesn't last all that long. And people plant flowers around boulders, but we need to take every steps that we can to ensure that once we've agreed on a property that is, I'm going to use the term problematic because of the potential for the stormwater issues, that, that somebody is looking after it in perpetuity. That it just doesn't, the protection of the stream just doesn't get forgotten in 10 to 12 years. I have one other question, where there's nothing whatsoever to do with stormwater, probably thrilled with right about now. And I'm looking at the schematic for, what is it, the first road, Massey Road? Yeah, Theresa Massey Lane. You show a turnout for gang mailboxes, a mail turnout. This is going to be a public road, correct?
It is.
Why are all the mailboxes going to be clustered down there instead of located at the individual families?
That's been a requirement from the post office.
And where's the car, where is the mail truck going to turn around?
He, I mean, he would have to go up and turn around and probably use the dead end, the hammerhead to turn around.
So the mail truck drives right past the houses with no mailboxes. All right, that's, if that's what the post office wants, and it's going to deliver the mail, but this, in this case, it doesn't make a lot of, it doesn't make a lot of sense that the truck has to go back, past all of the houses in order to turn around and head back out. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Roger, do you want to weigh in on the stormwater fork issue before we leave the topic?
Well, just briefly, listening to the comments, if you stay with the buffer, there's basically no maintenance, as I understand it. If you go with the swale, and I think you mentioned it has to be maintained.
I think to Rachel's point was that regardless of whether it's a buffer or a swale, it's about the homeowners realizing there's something there. I think there's no real difference. I think they have to know that that exists.
Okay, so if the swale is there and the homeowners don't do anything with it, but just normal growth occurs, nobody has to go in and clean that growth like they do on the side of the roads.
Oh, no, it would, yeah. I mean, it would take time, over time, yeah, but it'd be no different than, I guess that would get incorporated into your inspection and maintenance manual, that he's going to have to provide the homeowners association for anything, for any roadside ditch, backyard ditch, the stormwater BMP. Yeah, that would all be incorporated into that homeowners association document.
But that wouldn't curl with just the buffering there.
That would probably be in that manual as well. Obviously, it doesn't take the maintenance now, but it would be incorporated in that to make sure that that stays, I guess, a forested buffer. I think that's what we're finding is hard for staff to kind of enforce, we're not in people's backyards, to know that it's actually being maintained as a forested buffer.
Between the two.
Because rep planting trees would also cost money.
Is there, in your estimation, is there a discernible difference between the buffering and the, what's the other one called?
Swale.
Swale, yeah.
A difference for?
The runoff.
Well, yeah, as we were saying, the.
A discernible difference.
Oh.
Are we talking about, are we any difference at all? Or if there's a substantial difference, then obviously we should go with one or the other.
I think.
I'm just thinking in terms of the future maintenance, like Rachel brought up, the, you know, somebody's doing something to it, filling it in or whatever they may do versus the buffering. It seems to me the buffering is the least, you know, has at least maintenance requirements. So there's very little discernible difference.
I guess that's, it's hard for me to sit here and say what I see as insignificant, whereas a homeowner downstream that sees water in their basement is going to say any increase, right? So it's hard for me to sit here and say that's not significant. I think you're asking, it's really on the, yeah. I guess I don't want to put myself out there to say that on the record, to say that's not insignificant, when down the road, if there are issues, I think it's better to say, show that the numbers show that they're up to the predevelopment in my situation, from my seat, just because if there are issues down the road, you can kind of point to calculations rather than saying, we had a gut feeling it wasn't going to be a huge increase. But to a homeowner downstream, that could be a huge increase.
Can we show that, those numbers with the two?
That's provided.
Okay.
Yep, to show the increase, they is provided the information and those numbers and showing that increase.
So basically, you're saying the swale. You are saying that they can be the swale.
In light of the abutters that we've heard from, I think it's an easier path for the board to go, just because you're going back to your policy you've typically held to all, most of the developers in town. I think we've been pretty consistent, this board, to say, try to meet or get below predevelopment. I mean, there has been some very rare cases, we get into insignificant rate runoff, say for a two-year storm event or something like that, in certain situations where you have, it's really about context, too. I think it's just a little more difficult because you've heard from the abutters and the concerns for the runoff from this development, to say that, it's in the eye of the holder what insignificant is. That's a hard one to quantify.
Well, it seems to me we do have to give them some direction.
I agree.
And I think the chair should do that. I guess I have nothing else on this particular topic, right?
That's, yeah, I just kind of wanted to get this hammered away before we start in on any other general comments. So, you know, I wish there was probably, you know, I wish you could tell me that if we put the swale in behind 20 through 18, we've hit neutral and we can leave a vegetated buffer in the back of those other lots, but it sounds to me like, yeah, you kind of need one or the other, so.
Yeah, we need to capture it all.
So I think for where I said, I would like to kind of hold the line, this board is really established and say, you know, we want you to be at least at what predevelopment conditions were or better. So for me, the swale is, I think, where I'd like to see this go.
Yeah, and that's fine. I mean, we have an approach that we know will work, so we can work with that.
Okay. And then as far as getting into the other issues, you know, it seems to me like that seems to be the biggest hurdle, just noting some of the lots on this plan here. I know Jamelle's, you know, pointed out lot seven is a little undersized.
We've, yeah, we've adjusted that, so it's.
You are adjusting that, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, this plan right here has that adjusted.
Is there, well, let me ask you that. Has there been, I mean, I do see wetlands on private property, and it seems like some of it's probably unavoidable just based on what you're given to work with here. I'd like to really minimize that if we can. An example of that would probably be like lot 14. It appears like you might have enough to kind of get rid of some of that back end of the property, still be at the 30,000 square foot area, and get the wetlands off. Items like that, you know, I don't want to draw the lines for you, but I would like you to consider items such as that as you look to kind of rework this a little.
Yeah, and I mean, I think we've minimized them as much as we can and, you know, while still, you know, trying to leave a reasonable building window. I know the bulk of our wetland impacts are associated kind of near the main entrance of the road where we have two wetland crossings. And the way that we went about designing that was, you know, we targeted the narrowest point of those wetlands so that we could get the road through there. You know, if we, and we have some driveway impacts for lots one through three, but the alternative to that would have been to relocate the road into some of those wider wetland areas and impact more wetland. The way we have it structured now is we're, you know, we're avoiding the bulk of that wetland and just impacting it where we have driveway crossings. So, you know, there's about seven acres of wetland on the parcel. We're proposing to impact about a third of an acre. So that's, you know, we've really structured the subdivisions, the subdivision, the lot layout around avoiding where those wetland pockets are.
And then this is a general information question on my behalf. The test pits that you have here delineated on this plan, some of them seem really close to the wetlands. Is there any type of, do you have to be X amount of feet away from a wetland delineation to conduct a test pit?
Nope, they just have to be in appropriate soils.
Okay. So is that potentially the location of there? Wouldn't it be a private septic or is it public water? I mean, a private water, it's a well?
The well zone, so the majority of these lots have the septics towards the back of the lot, and the wells would be towards the front of the lot. the back of the lot, and the wells would be towards the front of the lot. Um, and this plan doesn't show it, but we do have, um, and when we submit for final, we'll, we'll show the, um, there's well zones that, um, were delineated by the, the nitrate study that was done for, for each of the septic systems.
Okay. So we'll look forward to seeing that. Um, outside of that, for right now, I think I've cleared the items that I need to discuss. Roger, do you have anything else you'd like to talk about?
The only thing I, I just wanted him to comment on, um, the fourth bullet on, on the staff's reports regarding the wetlands, um, you know, pertaining to lots thirteen through seventeen.
Was that about, um...
That's, that's, um, um, you know, putting in some hardscape features such as a rail fence or boulders, that, that sets, uh, spit of wetlands that comes down in the middle.
Yeah, 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 there's a finger of open space. Yeah, I mean, in, in the past, we've done, um...
Is that open space, or is that part of the wetlands right there? Looks like there's a, a little bit of wetlands in there.
It's both, it's both.
Yeah.
Yeah, both.
Yeah, it's both. Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, that's, that's kinda, that's why we have the open space laid out like we do. Um, but yeah, I mean, I know the, the applicant is willing, willing to work with, um, with the board on, on kinda how that gets demarcated. Um, I know in the past, we've done, you know, we've done pins, boulders, split rail fence.
Okay. Um, I think that's, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Rachel, do you have anything else? Rick?
I'm actually good, man.
Okay. So I, um, you know, I know you're requesting preliminary subdivision. I think you, I think you still need to, just from the discussion we've had, go back, kind of tidy up some of the stuff, and...
Would it be, would it be possible to get a conditional preliminary approval? Um, I mean, we, we know what we can do with the stormwater. We know, we know what we have to do for, for a redesign. I'm just wondering if it's something that the board would consider as a, as a conditional approval that we, um, that we address the, the outstanding staff comments, including the, the stormwater comment.
Um, I think I'm s- I, I don't know if the rest of my board members share my opinion, but I think I'd like to see it again with the, with the full layout and, and the plan that we can kinda digest. And I, I know it's, uh, not always convenient to have to go through the cycle again, but I think, at least from my personal opinion, I, I would like to see the, the information again presented. Yeah, so, I think that's it for tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Portland Pump Company requests a site plan amendment review for eleven Border Road, assessors map R fifty-five lot nine. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this project's located in the industrial zoning district off of Border Road. Uh, the applicant's proposing to construct a twenty-four hundred square foot warehouse building and approximately eight hundred square foot gravel driveway on the property. Uh, staff has suggested that the applicant modify the parking on the site. Uh, that could result in a larger contiguous lawn area. The applicants should discuss this with the board. Staff would also like to point out that the applicant has noted that building-mounted lighting fixtures are proposed on the property, but did not provide a lighting plan for review. And staff was a little confused about the existing proposed utilities on the property, so the applicant should be sure to discuss this part with the board. And that's all there.
Good evening again. My name is Travis Latelier, um, with Northeast Civil Solutions, uh, here to present a amended site plan for Portland Pump Company. Um, the site, as Jamel says, is located at eleven Border Road in the industrial zone. Uh, we're looking to propose a twenty-four hundred square foot, um, metal building on the site, uh, to be used as a warehouse. Based on the usage of the property, there's a requirement for twenty-eight parking spots. Currently, there are eight parking spots currently delineated on the, in the paved section of the site. Um, we have located an additional twenty parking spots, uh, within the existing gravel area on, on the property. Um, and there was a, there was a comment about how to delineate the, uh, the proposed gravel parking, since we can't put pavement markings down. Um, we're, we're looking to, uh, propose using some sort of signage, uh, either, uh, begin and end parking type of signage, uh, on the building, and then, uh, just, uh, at the, at the ends of the proposed parking in the front there. Um, there's also a question about the, there's a twenty-foot access road around the, the rear parking, um, when there's a, there's a twenty-five foot requirement within the ordinance. Um, we, we propose twenty feet to, for, for a few reasons, um, to reduce impervious as much as possible on the site. Uh, we, we were required to add a, a little bit of gravel to get to the twenty-foot mark. Um, also, there is a small landscaped area with a tree in that area, which we hope to, um, keep with keeping, uh, keeping the width at twenty feet. In addition, we are also proposing a grassed area in the front of the site. Uh, that will be to delineate, um, the proposed parking, also delineate the gravel drive around the new building, um, in addition to delineating the property line. Um, and we're hoping to more or less keep it as, as proposed. Um, as far as, uh, existing utilities, uh, the site's currently served by public water and sewer, um, and electric. Um, the new building will only need electric service. Um, where we're proposing the new building, there's actually a, a couple of storage units that have an underground electric service currently going to it. Um, we're proposing to reuse that service for this new building. Um... And there was a comment about the lighting. We're actually not proposing, um, any wall-mounted lighting at this time. Uh, I think, I think what I had meant to say in the previous submission was that if there was any lighting in the future, it would be a full cutoff type, type lighting, but there, there's no, there's no lighting proposed with this, with this submission. And with that, I would, uh, like to open up any questions and comments.
Thank you very much. Uh, we do have the opportunity for public comment this evening. If there's anyone here that is, uh, would like to speak on this, please approach Prodean and state your name. So now I'm gonna close public comments. Rick?
Sure. So you, you have no lighting plan for the outside of that building at all?
No, no, we're, uh...
What's the current lighting there? I'm not familiar with that site so much.
I believe there are some wall packs on the existing building. Um, I don't, I think there might be, there's an existing light pole, um, on the, it's actually just off the site right there, but, uh, other than that, I...
So what exactly is the, that's just gonna be warehouse space?
Warehouse space, yeah. Storage warehouse.
Okay. So is the, is it, are you thinking that it's just gonna be used during the day? And so you...
I mean, there might, there'll be lights inside the building, of course, but I, I don't see...
You don't see the need for any outside lights?
No.
I guess I might have to do a drive-by or something. I just can't envision a building with no lights in it. You're adding twenty-four spaces?
Um, so the, the ordinance requires space, cause the, this is, this is office and warehouse currently. Um, the ordinance to come up to current standards requires twenty-eight parking spaces. Um, there are eight...
Oh, for, for both buildings?
For both, for the whole, the whole site, yes.
I'm sorry, the way that I read it, it said it required twenty-eight spaces.
No, no.
And I didn't realize that you were including the existing building.
Exactly.
So you're only adding the four?
Yeah, exactly.
Correct, okay. Okay, that makes, that makes a lot more sense.
We're delineating all twenty-eight on the site plan.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense. I thought you were adding twenty-eight spaces with no lights.
No, no, no.
Okay, that helps. Um, so is there, you said there's two existing storage buildings there now? Do you, is...
They're, they're basically, uh, like, uh, what do you call them? Like contain, like containers, uh, they're, they're just sitting on...
Are they something that you're gonna haul away, or do you demolish them?
No, they'd be hauled away. They're not, they're not...
They're not permanent? They're like temporary structures?
Exactly.
And they're currently fed by underground utilities?
Yeah, they're, they, I mentioned, you mentioned that there was a line that does currently feed the...
Is it fed from that, from the first building, or is it fed from its own service? Is it its own, you know, saying, is it fed from the utility, or is it fed from that building?
So there's a generator here. I believe it's, but I, I'm pretty sure it's fed from the existing building. I'll, I'll, I can definitely confirm that, but, uh...
Um, you know, I guess this is just a site plan review?
It's amendment.
Yeah, I mean, for a preliminary, it's fine, but there's a lot more details, obviously. You don't have to, you'll have to work out.
Okay.
Is that building gonna be fed so, I mean, is that generator so, gonna be solely for that building, or is that...
No, no, the generator is for the...
Rick, it's an, it's an amendment. Rick, it's an amendment, it's not a preliminary. So if we approve the amendment as presented, he's off and, and running.
Okay.
So...
Well, the, the, the new building will only require electric, and, and, and there is a service currently in the area that we're proposing to reuse.
Okay, I'm all set. Yeah, I...
I do wanna just, um, quickly state that if, if you're proposing no additional lighting on this, other than some wall packs, if you, down the road, decide you'd like a light, cause you find it a little dark out there, you realize that you're gonna be starting this process again, you'll have to come back for another amendment. And I'm just wondering though, if that's really the approach you wanna take by going through this process another time for a light, and maybe some sort of...
That's my agenda.
But if...
I guess I'm a little confused. Are you proposing lights or not?
No, there are no proposed lights.
None?
No.
Not even wall packs in the building?
No.
Okay.
Uh, Rachel, would you, uh...
Yeah, I'm just waiting to see if you're gonna change your mind.
No, not at this time.
Okay. Um, I've got, I assume that this building set me on a, a concrete slab? Is that, I, I, cause I was looking at the two-point font, and I usually have difficulty reading some of that. Um, I have a question on the, the flow around the proposed building. On the, as I look at, um, well, sheet two of four, the site layout and utility plan, uh, to the right of the proposed building, you've got a twenty-five foot, um, gravelled area.
Yep.
A car's gonna, a truck's gonna be circling around there?
Um, yes, yeah. I mean, it's for access around the building. It, it's currently gra- it's primarily gravel at the moment. We're adding a little extra just to ensure we can get around the building.
Right, and in back of the building, you've only got fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Is that gonna limit the size of the trucks? Is it gonna change the access? Is there gonna be an access door in the back?
There's no proposed access door in the back, no. The, 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 the plan we submitted shows, um, large warehouse doors in the front with a, with a man door on the side, uh, the side facing the existing building, um, with no, no access in the rear.
All right, I think that fifteen feet's kinda tight. Uh, and the staff noted that the, the size of the, uh, landscaped buffer, the seeded and loamed area near the parking, i- is not likely to, uh, have a good, uh, survival rate. Um, had you thought about creating landscaped areas in other places, as the staff has suggested?
Um, well, there, there's not really a whole lot of other opportunity. The, the entire rear of the property is all a, a storage, a storage yard. Um, there is a sm- there is a small, you know, landscaped area with, with a tree. Uh, there's also a grassed area to the, uh, to the left of the existing building, but, um, as far as other opportunities for landscaping, it, it's, uh, pretty limited on, on the site. So this was the, the best location, so the most visible location for landscaping. Um, also helps delineate the, the gravel drive and, uh, the property itself.
Well, I suggest you consider something more than just loam and seed, but something, some really hardy grasses or plants there, um, such as the kind you see in the medians on roadways. They might have more of a chance to, to make it past one year. I have no more questions.
Thank you. Roger?
I didn't know if, if it would benefit, I guess it was my comment trying to, to navigate that a little bit, um, just because that strip that looks like about five feet of proposed grass, the opposite side, which has, the applicant has no control over, it's the abutting property, is also all gravel. So you're essentially trying to get a five-foot strip of grass to grow in the middle of open gravelled area, with that probably has truck moving around and, and such like that. So my suggestion was trying to look at expanding the area that they do have a chance, and that's probably below those eight spaces. Like, can you expand that by, like, maybe shoving those eight spaces closer into the site? Enough to still allow you your, your truck movement through the site, but maybe you can gain that same square footage in an area that you're already gonna grow, you know, expand that, make that larger to kinda balance that. And it was hard for me to articulate, that's why I just kinda wanted to clarify. Without a plan in front of you when I'm talking about it, uh, it was a little difficult for me, but, um...
No, I, I understand, I understand where you're going, and that's why I suggested that, um, there are plants in the middle of, um, the median, I guess, parkway that survive on about three feet.
And that could be another option, is trying to lift that up, too. You could even raise that bed, doing something.
Yeah. So I, I, I do suggest that, uh, it's a good idea to have the plant, to have the planting there, but make sure it's really, really hardy.
Hardy, yep. Okay.
Roger, um, I actually, um, had the, uh, opportunity to go out to this site today. I was up in that area. Um, it's off of, if you're familiar with, uh, where the US Postal Facility is, you're going in that road there, it's the first road on the right. I never even knew it existed before. And you have to drive in quite a ways. And it's, it's an industrial, industrial, industrial development. And there's snow on the ground now, but I can't imagine any kind of landscaping in there at all. I mean, maybe there is some, but...
There, there's a little bit on the site.
But I mean, it's really a stretch to see. It's all gravel. Um, and I actually drove into the site, and what I, I don't know this, but my, I suspect what you wanted, what the, they wanna do with this building is to store some of the stuff they have stored just outside. I mean, it, it looks like they have all kinds of storage outside.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what they're gonna be putting inside, but yes, they, they have...
I mean, they've got a lot of stuff there, you know?
Exactly, yes. It's definitely a storage yard.
So I, I, I mean, I don't think you can do a lot with this. I don't personally think, I mean, it's a, it's just a, it's a gravel, gravelled area. The whole area out there appears to be all gravel. So I, I mean...
Yeah, what I tried to...
I don't think we can make something more out of this than, than what it is. It's just gonna be a building to, to store some of the stuff that's exposed out there, I think.
Exactly, yes.
So, um, I, I think it's, you know, I hate to disagree with you, but I, I can't imagine this strip of, of grass, it might be the only, I don't know, by a lot more. Um, I just, I don't know, I, I don't see anything.
Well, I think you're agreeing with me, Roger. That's why I was saying, I don't think that grass is gonna grow, so what is the other option?
It's, it's just like the Valerias, it's all gravel, as far as I'm concerned. And, um, so I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I, um, I don't really have a whole lot else to add. I think, you know, if this is in a, as Roger's pointed out, a very industrial area, so, uh, that said, I do have a...
So, uh, that said, I do have a draft motion here. Uh, I will read it. I move to approve the site plan amendment project titled Proposed Warehouse Building, proposed by Portland Pump Company, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Northeast Civil Solutions dated twelve seventeen eighteen, with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Findings: The applicant is proposing to construct a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot warehouse building with an existing compacted gravel area on the site, an eight-hundred-and-twelve-square-foot gravel driveway, and to delineate the parking on the site. Property is located within the industrial I zoning district and is identified on the Town of Scarborough tax maps as map R fifty-five lot nine. Planning Board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation and finds that the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review and zoning ordinance requirements for site utilization and layout, access, internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, architecture, signage, utilities, and storage. Waivers: One, permit the twenty-foot parking aisle with west of the existing building on site. Conditions: One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall revise the plan set to include: A, a planned notation stating that the project design meets the performance standards in section nine A in the zoning ordinance; B, an additional accessible parking space; C, um, there is a deviation, uh, just so you know, uh, from the document you're holding. Uh, C, the signage proposed to be delineated by the gravel parking areas; D, floor plan and outside access plan; E, the existing utilities on the site and any other utilities that are proposed to be serviced in the new building; F, a revised parking matrix as noted in the staff review memorandum dated one fourteen nineteen; G, required state plan notation fi, found in section three B eight in the site plan review ordinance. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Two, prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall: A, address the stormwater management comments in the staff review memorandum dated one fourteen nineteen; B, address the comments in the peer review memorandum, memorandum by Woodward and Curran dated one eleven nineteen. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. And three, prior to the start of destruction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. That is the motion.
Okay.
Second, is there any discussion? All in favor? Show that unanimous. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
We expect to be there for the ribbon, okay?
All right, number thirteen, BPJ LLC, request a site plan amendment review for fifteen-hundred Technology Way, assessors map U thirty-nine lot forty-seven thirty. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this proposal is located in the Higis Parkway zoning district at the main veterinary and medical center, uh, at the end of the Technology Way, uh, in the Enterprise Business Park subdivision. Uh, the applicant was before the board in October for a sketch plan review. The applicant's proposing to construct a two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eight-square-foot building expansion along with a new drop-off area and minor improvements to the pedestrian infrastructure. The applicant has requested a waiver for the traffic study because they do not anticipate a significant increase in trip generation at the site. The applicant should discuss this with the board. On the site plan, the applicant has noted that they had, they planned to vegetate the areas of encroachment within the fifteen-foot landscape buffer along the easterly property line. However, however, they did not provide a landscape plan. The applicant should provide the board with details about their vegetation plans in this portion of the property. The applicant included details about the proposed building-mounted light fixtures, but did, but did not provide a lighting plan for review. And the applicant should also coordinate with the fire department in regards to the required walk paths along the perimeter of the building expansion. Staff has provided the board with a draft, uh, motion with conditions for your consideration tonight. That's what I have.
Thank you very much. Set your name.
Hi, Adam Shane with Stantec. Well, we're here seeking an amended site plan approval for an approximately twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot building expansion at the main veterinary and medical center. Uh, the property is located at fifteen-hundred Technology Way, uh, also known as lot thirty of the Enterprise Business Park, uh, development. Uh, the site is accessed via route one, uh, through Enterprise Drive to Technology Way, uh, as seen on our... Uh, the site has three abutting properties, two of which are undeveloped, uh, the third being the, the downtown's property, uh, which abuts our property on two sides. Uh, today, the site includes the existing ninety-seven-hundred-square-foot building, uh, which is a mix of single multi-level building, excuse me, totaling a gross floor area of thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, currently, there are seventy-four parking spaces on site. Uh, there's an accessory used MRI trailer on site, uh, along, excuse me, the northerly side of the building. Site includes many landscape plantings, uh, small trees and shrubs throughout. Site lighting is provided through pole-mounted lights as well as a few building-mounted lights. Uh, the proposed project includes a twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot building expansion as well as a few site improvements, uh, as noted. Some of the site improvements include a temporary drop-off space at the main entrance to the building. Uh, this is to, to provide some ease of access for client, or customers, dropping off injured pets, uh, in and out of the building. It will be signed as a five-minute, uh, temporary parking zone as requested by the fire department. Uh, the area to the front of the building is a fire lane, so it will be important to, to maintain access there. The fire department has reviewed and approved, uh, this design. Other site improvements include, uh, the relocation or the addition of, uh, an ADA space, uh, which is just off the plan view there. Uh, this is intended to, during winter months, to provide a secondary accessible route to the, to the main entrance. The current accessible route from the ADA spaces to the main entrance sometimes gets blocked with snow, so this will provide a secondary, uh, alternate. Um, some other site improvements include the relocation of the transformer pad, um, to meet CMP requirements for setbacks from the building. Uh, there needs to be ten feet from any windows on the building. Um, additionally, the fire department has requested a permanent egress walkway from any emergency exits, which is provided, uh, to the rear, or to the side and rear of the building. Uh, we both agreed, us and the fire department agreed, that this would be a, a better route, um, to avoid any, um, issues with the fire lane to the front of the building. Um, some other site improvements include re-vegetating areas of encroachment into the landscape buffer. Um, today, the area is forested with a mix of, uh, pine and spruce. So if, if needed, we will replant some of these trees, uh, once construction activities are completed. Um, today, stormwater management for the site is provided through a wet pond at the beginning of Technology Way. Can be seen here on this area, uh, in this area here. Um, the intention is to, uh, maintain this stormwater treatment method. It was originally approved as part of a site location develop, of development permit for the subdivision. Um, today, with the proposed development, we still remain within the approved, uh, threshold for impervious and developed area. So we expect to, to keep utilizing the pond for stormwater management. Our office has performed preliminary traffic counts for the site, uh, we feel that there will not be an increase in trip gen, generation to the site. It was originally permitted for seventeen trip generations for both AM and PMP times. We feel that, uh, with the proposed expansion, that we will still remain within that based on our traffic counts. Um, at this point, I'll, I'll turn it back to the board for any, any, uh, further questions on, on some of the staff, staff comments that remain.
Thank you very much. Uh, we do have an opportunity for public comment on this item. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Please approach the podium. Seeing none, I will close public comments. Uh, Rachel, do you wanna kick this one off?
Yeah, I'm looking at, uh, A three, uh, which is the interior design, uh, and I've got some questions. And it actually, they actually addressed your, your last comment in terms of traffic. You're proposing seven new exam rooms, um, with a cat ward, additional runs, and infectious disease quarantine area. How many, uh, additional staff is gonna be hired?
Uh, my understanding is there will be no new staff.
You must be really crowded.
Yeah, I can, uh, well, this is the owner here, so...
Dr. Alan Podoff, uh, one of the owners of the main veterinary and medical center. As far as staff, I mean, this, this is a, this is a growing business, and so we, we do increase staff on a regular basis, just as we build apartments. It's a, it's a hospital that requires twenty-four-hour, it's open twenty-four hours a day, so there's staff there all the time. So, so it dilutes how many people are there at any one time of our total, uh, number of employees. But as, as this project develops, we, we, we do wanna add a cardiologist and, uh, another internal medicine person, possibly dermatologist. So that would be three, uh, and each one of those would be a technician when they're on. The, as far as the, the, the ward itself, I don't think we'll, we'll need additional ward staff. We have a lot that's in the one room now that, that would be moving back and forth. Having the, the, uh, the cat ward is, is just, it's a, it's a new methodology of, of reducing stress on pets when they're, and they're hospitalized. So instead of having dogs and cats in the same ward, it's, uh, it's, it's a design change. And so we, it, uh, it will allow us to maintain more animals within the ward, within the hospital at any one time. And we don't need to move them out, but, uh, initially, there won't be an increase in staff needed for that transition.
But ultimately, you do anticipate a fair number more if your business grows?
Over time, yes, I think, yes, I would hope so.
I, I think at, at some point, um, throughout that area, we're gonna have to take another look at the, at the traffic. Even if nobody, no other staff is added after this goes, after this is built, within a few years, all of these rooms also assume patients coming, and people driving in, uh, to seek the service. I have one other question around that, and as I look at the infectious disease area, do you anticipate any patient drop-off? Or are the patients gonna be coming in the front door and carried through?
It depends on how, how far in advance we know it's an infectious disease.
Well, I'm just thinking in terms of the parking in an area for somebody possibly...
They, they wouldn't see parking going around. Any, any admittance to the infectious disease ward would be done by staff who's properly dressed. So that, that's not a, it's not a client area.
So there's...
But we have doors leading out, so we don't have to go through the hospital.
So no patients, and no, uh, owners are gonna be driving around and back?
No.
To meet a staff person?
No, we, we, we have them in the front.
Okay. All right, I think that's actually all the questions I have.
Rick?
Um, you know, I, I like the service that they're providing, and, and I like to see the businesses grow. And I think this is a great business for this area and for that, for that location. You know, as far as the traffic study goes, I'm kinda torn on that a little bit, only because I know that, you know, the traffic fees are based on peak hours, and it's not necessarily, you never know when the animal's gonna get sick, so... You know, um, a- a- as far as waiving the traffic, I, I hate to set a precedence, um, where, you know, this is a twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot expansion, but is it at peak hours? So, you know, that's one of the waivers that's in the draft motion, I guess, and I would, uh, I'd be okay with it, but, um... Yeah, that's all I'll say on that. But I do like, I, I think it's a great business, and I think it's, I, I think it's a benefit to the community, so, um, I'm willing to... I think it's, I think it's fine.
There it is. I, um, I will support both waivers. Um, I think they've done a good job in, um, you know, addressing the concerns the board has had in the past. And, and I es, I'm assuming they're gonna, um, address the conditions set forth in the proposed draft that we have, so I have no... I have nothing for this, uh...
So just, thank you very much, Roger. I, I would just like to know that, you know, you have in your submission a request for waivers for landscaping, photometric traffic impact, auto turn simulation. So it's, those are, that, that is accurate, right? Those are all requests you've made here?
Uh, correct.
All right. You know, to me, the, you know, the auto turn, you know, I, you know, you weren't driving around the building anyways back there, right? So that's kind of a, you know, that's kind of a... I mean, did you have that addressed under the conditions?
I didn't. I, the reason it isn't in there is 'cause it, they're changing the parking layout.
Right.
Um, so we thought it was sort of an implicit...
So you don't need to specifically call it out, all right?
It's relevant.
All right. The only one I actually really had, um, a little concern with was the landscaping.
Sure.
Which, uh, I would typically not find myself saying that very frequently. Other board members...
Take, take this word for it. This is unusual.
This is, this is a new moment in my five-year tenure here. And the only reason I bring it up is because, you know, we realize that we are losing some of that, um, that landscaping there, and then you are saying you are gonna replant, and that's great. I just don't know exactly how that's gonna work, or what you're gonna do it with.
Sure.
So as part of the conditions is, um... Have you provided them a copy?
Yeah.
Would you mind, just, part of the conditions, we do ask for a landscape plan. Um, not necessarily that it needs to be represented to the board, but I think it would be important for staff to review it. And if they find it adequate to what it is you're, you're doing, you know, great, we won't have to see you again, so...
Sure.
Um, over some trees, so...
Excellent.
That was probably the only thing that really jumped out at me, um, as far as your waiver request, just 'cause of the scope of it. The rest of the, um, items you're proposing, you know, I, I'm gonna echo Rick on this. I'm glad you guys are growing. I'm glad to see, uh, you've got some expansion, you're gonna be providing more services to this community. Uh, I think those are all, those are all great things to hear from our businesses here, so, um, you know, taking the temperature of the room, I think you're pretty much there as long as you fulfill, you know, your work. You get some work left, left to do with staff, but sort of that, I am prepared to, um, present the motion tonight for, uh, a site plan amendment, so... Uh, I move to approve the site plan amendment project titled Main Veterinary Clinic, Medical Clinic Building Addition, proposed by BPJ LLC, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Stantec dated twelve seventeen eighteen, with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. The applicant, findings: The applicant is proposing to construct a two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eight-square-foot building addition along with new drop-off area and minor improvements to the pedestrian infrastructure. Property is located in the Higis Parkway zoning district and is identified on the Town of Scarborough tax maps as map U thirty-nine lot forty-seven thirty. Planning Board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation and finds that the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review and zoning ordinance requirements for site utilization and layout, access, internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, architecture, signage, utilities, and storage. Waivers: One, waive the requirement for a traffic impact study due to the slight increase in trip generation at the site. Conditions: One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall revise the plan set to include: A, detectable warning panels on both ends of the proposed crosswalk; B, a landscape plan that includes details about the vegetation plan within the fifteen-foot landscape buffer as noted on the plans dated twelve seventeen eighteen; C, the total areas associated with impervious cover, landscape areas, and disturbed areas; D, a planned notation that refers to the two-thousand-one SLDA permit on the site utility grading drainage and erosion control plan, sheet C three point zero; E, revise the plan note that refers to the transformer box in the site utility grading drainage and erosion control plan, that's sheet C dash three point zero, to include language that the new location of the transformer box shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department; F... planning department; (f) the required walk pass along the perimeter of the proposed building expansion; (g) the photometrics plan that includes proposed building-mounted light fixtures. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Two, prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall (a) provide documentation to ensure that the proposed traffic conditions on the site will conform with the original trip generation proposed on this lot, for this lot, within the Enterprise Business Park subdivision approval; (b) provide approval from the Scarborough sanitary district; (c) coordinate with the fire department to discuss the required walk pass along the perimeter of the building expansion; (d) address the comments in the peer review memorandum dated 1/10/19 by Woodrow and Curran. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Three, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. Meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. Do you have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor. I hope that's to be unanimous. Congratulations. Good luck to you guys. Number 14, a staff report.
All right. We do have a few comments. So there have been two new planning board members for this board. To be, they're going to be posted by the town council on 1/16. They should be official members by the second meeting in February, so hang in there.
And everyone, please come.
Yes, very important to come during this time. The board will need new liaisons to the long-range planning committee and the transportation committee. We can think it'd be wise to decide this once we have a full board in February. And then staff did provide a letter from a resident of Stone Ridge Drive in regards to the table Piper Shores project to the board tonight. I don't know if you have anything else, Angela?
I have nothing.
Okay.
Thank you. Administrative amendment report?
None this time.
Any correspondence other than the outlined letter from the public on Piper Shores? Correspondence? Planning board comments?
Yeah, and I'm not sure whether this is correspondence or comment. I did receive an email from a member of the Conservation Commission that talked about both the commission and then asked me specifically about Dorado Drive and Piper Shores, and I informed her that I could not comment on that, and that she needed to either call the planning department or to take a look at the workshops that have been held and that are on the local access.
Thank you. Any other planning board comments? Yes, Roger?
When I was out looking at the Portland pump location today, I noticed across the street on Wuzzy Road is, it's all been, it's actually a road going in and out. Looks like another industrial park going in and out. Are you familiar with that? Is any of that on Scarborough property as you're aware?
Looks like Angela's familiar with it.
I am familiar with it. That's actually in South Portland. However, that area is the Red Brook Watershed, so even though it's being built in South Portland, they are contributors of the Red Brook Watershed Fund, so they pay to the Town of Scarborough based on their impacts and their well and impacts. So we are watching that closely, actually, but it is in South Portland.
And basically going to be an industrial park?
Yeah, the South Portland Planning Department provided that information because they were paying to the Town of Scarborough, and I believe it was for a contractor's yard and possibly, I'm trying to think, I think it was some, like, construction equipment, maybe like a dealer kind of, you know what I mean? Like, they would have construction equipment out there and things like that, like a warehouse.
It's interesting, the development that's out in that area, which is kind of hidden, especially when you go down towards the postal facility and, you know, all that stuff in there. Mishmash of everything.
And confusing on what's in Scarborough and what's in South Portland, because the road is actually the boundary when you go down that way, so it's interesting.
Do I have any other planning board comments?
My comment is, nice meeting, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. My only comment would be congratulations. Everyone, you did it. It was a good meeting. I didn't know how we would do on time this evening based on the size of the agenda, but went relatively smooth. I look forward to working with all of our board members here and two new ones hopefully in a month or so. So, that's it. I will make a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? I hope that's to be unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I have like, oh, sorry, you hit the gal. I have like an unofficial, like, but...
You have to hold it.
Normally, the way that we do...